A lot of public comment, but it doesn't say for what section.
No.
I don't know what it looks like.
Good evening.
Four.
Should be on. Good evening. All right. I'd like to call the meeting to order for May twenty seventh. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Robert Parkhurst.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Potem Lowe was excused for this evening's meeting. Councilmember Edward Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Here.
And Councilmember Kelly Krebs.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum?
Great, thank you very much. All right, it is my turn to do the Pledge of Allegiance and Inspiration, so if you are able, could you please join me? Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our
Well, it is nice to see such a full chamber tonight, thank you everyone for coming. So, I think it's, everybody knows yesterday was Memorial Day. And, you know, it's, we often forget, it's not a day of sales for cars and appliances, but it's a day to mourn the military personnel who have died in the line of duty. And, you know, I think it's worth reminding us the importance of this date and its impact to the residents of Sierra Madre. There was a memorial at the cemetery yesterday. And in reflecting on that and kind of thinking about it, I did a little bit of research. And according to our records, there are one hundred and sixty-nine veterans that are buried at the cemetery. And this includes John E. Richardson, a Civil War veteran, and Carter Servant, and who was the first person who was interned there on July third, eighteen eighty-two. And every year since nineteen twenty-four, the Sierra Madre Veterans of Foreign Wars Post Thirty-two-oh-eight, along with Scout Troop Three-seventy-three, places flags and crosses at the graves of military veterans. Our cemetery has veterans from the American Civil War, both Union and Confederate soldiers, the Spanish-American War, World War One, World War Two, and the Korean War. So I think it's, you know, it's important for us to reflect on it and to think about the importance of these people who gave all to our country. With that, let's move on to the meeting agenda. Do we have any modifications to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I entertain a motion for approval.
Move to the approval, Virginia.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Next, we'll move on to reading resolutions and ordinances by title only.
Some moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving right along. All right, now we'll move to the May thirteenth minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes? Madam Clerk, did you receive any by email?
Mr. Mayor, I did not receive any emails from the City Council asking for amendments to the minutes.
Great.
Move to approve.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. There were no closed sessions between May thirteenth and May twenty-seventh. So now we'll go on to mayor and city council reports. Who would like to go first?
Short report, Mr. Mayor. So last week, along with Councilmember Krebs, I toured the library to see progress on construction. And also, the ad hoc revenue committee could not get the meeting together, couldn't get enough bodies, so that did not happen. So there's nothing to report there. I will mention that tomorrow, there is a, tomorrow morning here in chambers, there is a Sierra Madre Chamber of Commerce meeting. I am the liaison for that, and the meeting will be here tomorrow at eight AM.
Excellent. Who would like to go next?
I'll go. On the fifteenth, I attended the planning commission meeting. Couple of things, pretty significant were done. They continue discussing the noise ordinance update, and it's not done yet, but they're getting close. And they performed the annual review of the conditional use permit for Alverna Heights Academy. Two checks. Last week, Thursday, I went to the council of governments meeting, and there really wasn't a whole lot of exciting things to report. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Councilmember Krebs?
As noted, we did tour the progress of the library, and I wanted to commend staff for the progress made there. I know there was some frustration for some time while a lot of the work was going on underground, inside, you know, progress unseen. But I really think over the next few weeks, you know, as you drive by or walk by, especially on the south side of the property, you're going to notice a lot of, a lot of progress being made quickly. The slab for the new addition on the south side is poured and cured, and I think there will be beams rising from that. And so I think, I think people will really start to see the momentum pick up there, and a lot of visible signs of progress on what's going to be, I think, it was, you know, we've been talking about it a long time, we've seen drawings, we've seen renderings, but something about standing inside the building, even though it's, you know, just a frame, basically, it's really exciting to think about what the transformation that the library is going to have and what that's going to do for our community. So that was great, and thanks to our contractors and our consultants for allowing us and providing the tour to do that. I did joke that the elevator is there, and I made the joke that obviously we should probably keep it away from the community center on, at Sierra Vista Park, because they also have elevator issues, so. And then I went to the Community Services Commission meeting on Monday, and just a plethora of awesome events coming up. All of the things that we all love about the summer and the summer months, and all of the fun activities in the park, and already, already plans for this fall, including the kind of makeup trail race, which we were all missing this past weekend. And, yeah, just really a lot of exciting things to come, and I'm really excited, all the things that they have on tap for our community.
Great, thank you so much. All right. So on April fourteenth, over at the Hart Park House, we had a session on feedback for the Sierra Madre website. I attended that, and we had a couple of people there, got some feedback. We just encourage folks, if you do have feedback on the website, to go ahead and submit it to our communications team here. We're looking for trying to, we're going to do a full revamp of that here, and so getting your feedback is really helpful on that. April fifteenth, there was a Clean Power Alliance meeting, nothing to report out of that. On May, on Saturday, May seventeenth, and Tuesday, May twentieth, we had town halls for after-action reports on the fire. Good feedback that we received at both of those sessions. We do have websites as well up for those. Do we have, can, what's their website? Do we have chief, do we, does someone know it off the top of their head? Look at that. Thank you for bailing me out. Good evening, Mayor. The, the website, dedicated website for the receiving of feedback for the after-action for the Eaton Fire is sierra madre listens dot org? Sierra Madre Listens. Sierra Madre Listens dot org. We do have flyers out front here for your convenience as well. I encourage folks to, to go ahead and fill that out and provide feedback. It's really important to learn what we did well and what we can improve in the event of future natural disasters. May twenty-first was a slightly busy day. The Sierra Madre Elementary School had a celebration of new pole banners on their light poles. And so I was there along with the superintendent and several people from Community Services. It was great to see those, it was a funding from the foundation. Then later that night, the Historic Preservation Society had ravioli at the firehouse, and that was a great event. We had representatives from Senator Perez and Assemblymember Harabedian's office stopped by and give certificates for that. And then that evening was the Natural Resources Commission, and at that meeting, the commission discussed potential regulations around artificial turf. And that will be coming to council here in the coming months, and then as well as the hazard mitigation plan. And then, as I previously mentioned, on the twenty-sixth, I was at the Memorial Day Remembrance at the cemetery. Representative Judy Chu came and gave very moving remarks. She is an incredible champion for our veterans here. She helped bring a VA center in San Gabriel Valley, so people didn't have to go downtown over to the west side to get care. And then we also had representative from Assemblymember Harabedian's office, so. That's my report. Now we'll move on to the city reports. So we have some city announcements here. Tickets are still available for Lizzie's Famous Chicken and Ravioli Dinner on May thirty-first at five PM. So please hurry before they are gone. It's forty dollars a ticket and must be purchased online through Eventbrite, and there's flyers in the back of the room. There's still time to enter the City of Sierra Madre's Artwork Contest. "A Day in the Life with Our Wildlife Neighbors" is the theme. The winning contest entries will be featured in our two thousand and twenty-six calendar with fun facts and smart living tips. This contest is open to, open to all ages, and the deadline is June seventh. For more information on how to submit, sierra madre ca dot gov slash wildlife art contest. And as expected, there are flyers in the back table. The Community Yard Sale will take place on June seventh from eight AM to twelve PM at Memorial Park. To register as a vendor, please call Community Services Department at six-two-six-three-five-five-five-two-seven-eight. And as, as Councilmember Krebs said, there's a lot of events starting off. The Summer Concerts in the Park starts on June eighth from six to eight PM with the Sierra Madre Music Company as the first performers. And then Movies in the Park are back. Get your chairs and blankets ready to watch Moana Two on June twentieth in Memorial Park. Movie will start at dusk. And that are all the announcements that we've got. We will now move into the public comment for items not on the agenda. Before we do, we have our Public Participation Code of Conduct. It is on the back of all the yellow cards back there. I encourage you to take a look at it prior to coming up. We often, you know, with this size of people, I'm going to quickly read it, because we've got a lot of people here, just so we all have, have it as a baseline. So your participation is welcome and invited at all city council meetings. The council requests that participants refrain from making personal, slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. A person who continues to disrupt the orderly contact, conduct of the meeting after being warned by the mayor or designated to cease the disruption may be precluded from future participation in the meeting. No signs, posters, or other large objects shall be brought into the council chambers or other meeting place if doing so would disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly course of the meeting. And with that, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment for items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. We have, in addition to the speaker cards that we, that were submitted just now, we have seven emails that were submitted for items not on the agenda. Those emails were forwarded to the City Council in advance of this meeting. There are, as I said, a number of speaker cards, and it doesn't, the speaker cards don't indicate if they're on items on the agenda or not on the agenda. So I think to err on the side of caution, we will pull them up, and if they are here on an item that's on the agenda, we can, we can move them if that's your pleasures.
Great, thank you, Madam Clerk. So who's the first that we have?
Laura Knighton.
Yes, it's not on the agenda, so thank you. Thank you, City Council, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Laura Knighton. I'm a Sierra Madre resident and parent of a third grader at Sierra Madre Elementary. Several of us are here tonight, parents at SME, asking the City of Sierra Madre to provide crossing guards and support for pedestrian safety at SME, particularly for the Auburn-Hiland intersection. The City of Pasadena provides crossing guards to the POSD schools that are within its city limits, and we're asking the City of Sierra Madre to do the same for the only public elementary in Sierra Madre. Auburn-Hiland is a four-way stop with two vehicle drop-off pickup lines, children and families walking to and from school, and a lot of middle school students congregate there in the morning as well to walk to their school. So this is a busy intersection before and after school, and there are no longer any crossing guards there because the SME staff members who had been filling that role on a voluntary basis aren't willing to do it anymore after incidents of almost being hit. And our principal says it's not in their job description, so they can't be required to do it. However, without a crossing guard, the Highland and Auburn intersection has gone from being very busy to being very confusing for pedestrians and for drivers, and really very unsafe. Things we have witnessed before and after school. Cars honking at other cars who have stopped for pedestrians, trying to get them to hurry. Cars trying to go around other cars who have stopped for pedestrians. Cars going into the intersection while pedestrians are in the crosswalk. Cars stopping and waiting in the crosswalk to join a line, forcing pedestrians to step blindly into the intersection. Even when we did have a regular crossing guard stationed at this intersection, the situation was tense. Parents have witnessed frustrated drivers yelling at the crossing guard when asked to wait or slow down, and drivers attempting to simply go around the crossing guard. So I don't blame our teachers for not being willing to voluntarily add crossing guard duty to their already busy day of teaching and caring for our kids. However, what we have now is a situation in which adults won't reasonably work in that intersection because of their concerns about safety, but our kids are being expected to cross the intersection daily, twice daily, without assistance. I know budgets are tight, but we're here to ask you to please don't wait until someone gets seriously injured to address this public safety problem. Please help our kids get to school safely and home safely. And I thank you for your attention and for your service to our city. Thank you.
That's a good question. Okay. So, so Councilmember Goss has a question, and we typically don't have applause on this. We try to keep this all neutral on it. I know it's, I know it's a popular issue, and I have to be the bad guy on that part of it. Councilmember Goss?
So have you spoken with the school district about this?
I have spoken with the principal.
Okay.
Who said that the school district doesn't provide crossing guards, the city, for POSD, the city provides the crossing guard.
So that's, that was their response?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Elizabeth Nuccio is the next speaker.
Hi, I'm here for the same machine, but a different plant. Thank you for receiving my comment. Because there is only seven days left of school, I suppose, we were hoping that, perhaps asking for a crossing guard within those eight days, seven days is a bit quick. If we could have police support during drop-off and during pickup, you know, half an hour before school, half an hour after school, the city will be able to get funds from it by hopefully ticketing people that are breaking the law. I know that during their last crosswalk kind of mission down by the center of town, it was hugely successful, and people were more aware. And we know that as people become more aware, they are going to be more cognizant of the situation and hopefully change their behavior for the better. So I was hoping that we could ask our police, police to then step in, do extra patrols, or at least just have someone stationed there during those two periods of time for the next seven school days. And if we can't have a crossing guard before school starts, to reinstate them at that time as well.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, Catherine Miller is next.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Catherine Miller, and I'm a resident of Sierra Madre and a parent of two elementary school-aged children. I'm here today to voice my concerns about pedestrian safety in the crosswalks outside of Sierra Madre Elementary. As someone whose children routinely walk to school and must cross the intersection at Highland and Auburn, I'm concerned about the lack of crossing guards outside the school and its impact on my children's safety, as well as the safety of all SME students on their way to and from school. In May twenty-twenty-three, the City of Sierra Madre requested that the Safe Transportation Research and Education Center at the University of California, Berkeley, conduct a complete street safety assessment study, the results of which are on the city website. This report called out Highland Avenue as a specific focus area with demonstrated pedestrian safety concerns near schools. However, in reviewing the photos taken by the experts who conducted the assessment, there was clearly a Sierra Madre Elementary provided crossing guard in the intersection of Highland and Auburn during the assessment. Surely the safety concerns cited are even more urgent now that SME staff will no longer agree to act as crossing guards due to concerns for their own personal safety. I have witnessed numerous incidents of unsafe driving behavior at the intersection of Highland and Auburn, including motorists entering the intersection while pedestrians are in the crosswalk, speeding through the intersection without stopping, and disregarding the basic rules of traffic right-of-way in driver's haste to enter the school drop-off line on Highland. While it may be natural to assume that providing crossing guards is the responsibility of the school district, please note, as others have said, that the City of Pasadena provides crossing guards for schools, public schools within its boundaries. Ultimately, it is the City of Sierra Madre who is responsible for pedestrian safety on city streets. I urge the City of Sierra Madre to provide crossing guards for these unsafe intersections near schools on Highland Avenue, equivalent with what Pasadena provides. Thank you for your time and service to the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, hold on one second. Councilmember Krebs?
I just had a question similar to the first comment. In terms of the incidents that you've witnessed, is it your opinion that the perpetrators are primarily parents of students dropping their kids off, or are these?
I believe so. I mean, I, I can't say that with certainty.
Right, but that's, that's your sense, is that these are folks that are engaged, that are there for the purpose?
That are there to drop off their children.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Rachel Jaeger. Jaeger?
Hello, everyone. I'm the last to go. All right. As someone who grew up in Sierra Madre and chose to come back and raise my children in Sierra Madre, I very much understand we are not Pasadena. However, the beauty of this town, for which it is endless, I'm like Miss Sierra Madre, is the care we have for each other. So my goal is to ask for alternative thoughts to help curtail the problem before it starts. For example, the stop sign blinking light at Mountain Trail in Orange Grove, of which I live off of Orange Grove, has made a huge difference in Orange Grove not being treated as a highway. In the past, blinking lights in downtown have helped significantly, especially at dusk with people being seen in the crosswalk, and to remind you, when you enter town, to slow down, even though people still don't, before an accident could happen. So I'm here to also ask, what could we do to help curtail this problem before it starts? So is there something alternative we could do as well, instead of just asking for funds for a crossing? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, the city librarian, Leila Regan. Oh, thank you. I don't believe so.
Hello, Mayor Park, hello, Mayor Parkhurst and our honorable City Council. I'm Leila Regan, your friendly neighborhood city librarian, and I want to say that summer is coming. And the library has our Sierra Madre Super Summer Kickoff Event happening Saturday, June seventh, which is the same day as our Community Yard Sale. But we're going to have ours at Sierra Vista Park along the side, if you're going up towards the Roast Loop Barn. We're going to be on that side. We'll make sure, we're going to have Thor's reptiles there for our kickoff. He is very popular with a lot of the kids. So if your kids are into creepy crawlies, or reptiles, or snakes, definitely come to our summer, our summer reading kickoff, Saturday, June seventh, at ten AM at Sierra Vista Park. We have a lot of amazingly fun events lined up for the summer, and you can read all about them in our wonderful calendar. Or you can go on our website and learn more there. We have quite a few that will require registration, and we're doing that through Eventbrite. We have three summer science workshops happening this summer. We also have some brand-new grown-up book clubs. So, a little bit different, we're bringing back our Sippin' Shush at RT Rogers, which is our silent book club, and that'll be, that's from our One Book One City, we're bringing it back. We'll be at RT Rogers where you can grab any kind of drink and sit quietly and read your book for an hour, and then you can either discuss your book with us, or you can have another drink or go on your merry way. So we have that. We have our Shelf Stories Book Club for our adults, which is a different genre book club each month. So in June, it'll be romance. If anyone wants to discuss the upcoming, it's called A Funny Story by Emily Henry. It's a really, it's about a librarian. Not, that's not why I picked it. But if you feel inclined to wear your favorite cardigan and join us at the library after hours, you're welcome to join our romance book club, which will be Thursday, June twelfth, from six-thirty to seven-thirty PM. And we will have all of these available on our website. You can grab a wonderful calendar from us, or you can go on Eventbrite and see all the ones that require or are requested for registration, so. We're looking forward to having a really great summer.
Thank you so much, Librarian Regan.
Mr. Mayor, the final speaker card is from David Gordon.
Mr. Gordon.
Good afternoon, good evening. David Gordon, president of Sierra Madre Playhouse. And I'm going to take this opportunity to introduce our executive and artistic director, Matt Cook. Matt has been with us since August of two thousand and twenty-three, and he is in charge of our transformation from being a theater to a performing arts center. So he's going to take two minutes and forty-eight seconds to tell you all about that.
Sure, thank you for having us. So we are now a full performing arts center. We have a play open right now called Flashes of Light, that it talks about Nikola Tesla inventing electricity, and the idea is that it's a goddess, Elektra, that gave him the power to do that. So it's a really nice play. We also have a dance series. So right now, we're the only presenter in Los Angeles presenting a professional season of dance makers from Los Angeles. So if you go to the Music Center, you see one Los Angeles dance company per year, everyone else is from out of town. So we're getting a lot of press in the LA Times and LA Dance Chronicle, all over, as being the only presenter in the whole county of Los Angeles doing this. So that's exciting, we'd love to see you. There are not a lot of Sierra Madre residents at So that's exciting. We'd love to see you. There are not a lot of Sierra Madre residents at those shows. People are coming from the West Side and all over. So we're trying to like get the energy right here in town that we're doing something different, and invite you all to it. Other than that, we have Hindustani music, which is classical music from India, coming up at the end of this month, and jazz. We'd love to see you at any of it. Oh, and Sherlock Holmes, so a silent movie with an R.E.M. album. So it's totally silent film from the 1920s, mixed with an R.E.M. album that syncs up almost exactly, and it's almost already sold out, and it's like five weeks away, so please come, come see it.
And when you come to the Sierra Madre Playhouse, one of us does a curtain speech, and we do a bit of market research, and our first question is, by show of hands, this is your first visit to the Sierra Madre Playhouse. And typically, we're getting about 20 or 30% of the audience who are coming here for the first time. So, which is pretty remarkable. We are bringing in new people all the time. The second question is, by show of hands, indicate whether you have been to a bar or restaurant before the show or intend to go after the show, and typically, we're getting nearly half the audience doing so. We are an economic incentive for people to come to Sierra Madre, and I don't want you ever to forget that. Items in the budget, the lavish grants that you have to give to worthy performing arts centers in your midst. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. All right, are there any more other comment cards?
No other cards were submitted, Mr. Mayor.
Great. So we'll move on to our presentations. Our first presentation is from Associate Librarian Doreen Thomas for the bookmark contest. Librarian Thomas, there we are.
Good evening, Mayor Parkhurst, Mayor Pro Tem Lo, city council members. My name is Doreen Thomas, and I am the Youth Services Librarian at Sierra Madre Public Library. And I'm here tonight to do a, to provide a brief recap of our 2025 bookmark contest that ran this year from April to, March to April. Library trustee Laura Palmer and myself worked together on the contest, and we came up with this year's theme, which was Love My Sierra Madre, which invited participants to showcase the people, places, or things that illustrate what they love about Sierra Madre, and what isn't there to love about Sierra Madre. And as you know, this contest is open to children from kindergarten through eighth grade who either live in Sierra Madre, or go to school in Sierra Madre, or have a Sierra Madre Public Library card. And this year's theme brought in 207 participants, which is a lot. Our contest judges had the wonderfully challenging task of going through each and every one of those 207 applicants, applications, and selecting a first and second place winner in each grade level, kindergarten through eighth grade. Now, all of the first and second place winners were already selected, and they were recognized at an award ceremony that took place here at City Council Chambers on Wednesday, April 30th. And in addition, all of the winners are on display at the library in the children's room. We have a nice display of all of the winning bookmarks. And I encourage you, when you have a chance, to please stop by and take a look at it. It highlights all of the beautiful, creative, lovely artistic work of some of our young library citizens. Okay, and of the nine first-place winners, so we had nine first-place winners, one in kindergarten through eighth grade, four of them were selected for printing, and that's what you see on the slide behind you. They were selected by four of our special guest presenter judges, which include Mayor Robert Parkhurst, our Friends of the Sierra Madre Library President, Jeanne Martin, our city manager, Jose Reynoso, and our Sierra Madre Library Board trustee chair, Diane Sands. And tonight, I'm excited to share with you the names of the four young artists whose bookmarks have been printed. But before I begin to share that with you, I want to take a short, brief moment to recognize the sponsoring organizations that helped make this contest possible. These organizations provided both funding and manpower. They were, they provided judges so that we could run our contest. And these fabulous six sponsoring organizations, in no particular order, include the Sierra Madre Community Foundation, the Sierra Madre Women's Club, the Mountain Views News, the Sierra Madre Cowanis Club, the Sierra Madre Civic Club, and the Friends of the Sierra Madre Library. And yes, let's please give them all a round of applause. Without them, we couldn't operate this contest. So as I mentioned, the image behind you includes the four printed bookmarks. And these, as I said, have already been printed, and they are available at the library for pickup. I also brought additional ones that you can pick up this evening. They're set out in the back, and everyone, Leila did distribute a collection to everyone there, so you have all four of them. Now, without further ado, let's get to the names of the artists who created these lovely bookmarks. If you are present when I call your name, please come up to the front so we can recognize you, and stay up at the front so we can take a group photo, okay? Yay, and there's our friendly librarian, who is also our photographer. The first bookmark is the one in orange with the orange border here, and it was selected by our Sierra Madre city manager. It was designed by a student in kindergarten at Sierra Madre Elementary, Caleb Schaeferman. All right. The next bookmark is the one that's bordered in blue, and it was selected by the Friends of the Sierra Madre Library President. It was designed by a student who's nine years old and in the third grade at Sierra Madre Elementary, Sophia Spears. All right. And then the next bookmark is the one that is bordered in purple, and it was selected by our Sierra Madre Library Board of Trustee Chair. It was designed by a student who is in the sixth grade at Sierra Madre Middle School, Alina Quo. And the final bookmark is the one that's bordered in dark green. It is our mayor selection, and it was designed by a student who's in the seventh grade at Sierra Madre Middle School. Consider that our drum roll. PJ Altrus. So I was going to say, now the mayor has something for you. Yeah, thank you. All right, so can we get a group photo with all of our winners with the city council?
All right. Now, next presentation we've got is Nancy Beckham with the Civic Club to present grant awards. Ms. Beckham?
Good evening, Mayor Parkhurst, councilmembers Garcia, Gos, and Krebs. I am Janet Gillespie, First Vice President of the Sierra Madre Civic Club, representing our outgoing president, Colleen McKernan, who could not join us this evening. Sierra Madre Civic Club was formed in 1944 to promote unity and good fellowship, and to strive towards civic, philanthropic, and youth welfare advancement. We fundraise each year to support many local events and organizations who request assistance for their activities. In addition to the grants we are about to distribute, we also sponsor Halloween window art. We assist with the Mount Wilson Trail Race, Huck Finn Fishing Derby, the Wisteria Festival, as well as decorating the rotunda here at City Hall. Sierra Madre Civic Club is proud to be here again in the council chambers to present checks to 17 organizations that provide services to the community of Sierra Madre. Each project was considered for an award after applying to a sponsoring club member. Club members then voted on all the submitted projects to be considered. Thanks to the hard work of club members through our fundraising efforts, this year we were able to give $20,020 to these worthy organizations, as well as $5,000 in scholarships to five high school seniors who either live, work, or go to school in Sierra Madre. That makes our total donations $25,020 for the year 2025. I will now call on Nancy Beckham, our philanthropy, philanthropy chairperson, to announce the recipients of this year's grants.
Thank you. It's my pleasure tonight to come here to pass out these checks, but in having to do so, I'm going to have to turn my back on these people in the front, so I apologize in advance. But there are some nice checks in my hand right here, and I know some of them are really waiting for. I've learned. I need someone from each group to come up, and although I think I know who is coming, if not, and you realize there's a pause, come on up. Whoops, thank you. Is someone here from the British home, like Rosario Munoz? Thank you, Rosario. Chris Olson, who I just met, from the cancer support community, a new place in town. Thank you. Mark Waterson of the Convalescent Aid Society, a place I have been to many times. Hey, I was happy to be there. Thank you. It's Gwen Robertson here for the Creative Arts. There you are. Happy children are going to play with clay. Bob Spears, the Volunteer Trail Maintenance. Jim Yang from Helping Hands Community Food Bank. Reading is Fundamental, the Pasadena chapter. Are you Susan McCarthy? Nice to have you here tonight. I know, but you know. I know, but those books go into little kids' hands, and it's so important for them to own those books. Well. Have you told these people what you do? Do you have a second? Turn around, tell them. It's your claim to fame. I know. Reading is Fundamental is an organization that was started about 50, 70 years ago in Washington, DC, and its object is to give all children a book. In fact, depending on the organization, which one, we give three books, or four, each year to the second grade in Pasadena. All of the children in Pasadena, Sierra Madre, Altadena, get three or four books each year. The second grade. Well, this requires money. Books have gone up to $4 apiece, which doesn't sound like much, but when you have to buy $3,000 or $4,000, it's a lot. And so we rely on our donors. Thank you very much. Sierra Madre Sir, Robert Ciardi. Sierra Madre Civic Club's Cultivation Committee in Birmingham? Anybody here with a Sierra Madre Elementary PTA?
Ms. Beckham?
Sierra Madre Events Committee.
Ms. Beckham?
Yeah.
Could you just use the mic a little bit more? We want to make sure people at home get to hear the great news as well. Thank you so much.
No, I actually watched the video after last Tuesday, so I know what you're talking about. Better? Hi, how are you? Of course, Carol, thank you. Uh, okay. Right, that's, that's the one. Sierra Madre Community Nursery School, Theas Anderson. You did babysit my children. Unbeliev, a name like Theas, how do you forget it? You don't. You're welcome. The Sierra Madre Library Foundation, Rob Stacky, Sticky, Stacky?
Stockley.
Stockley. Oh, well. Well, I have obliterated him, so don't tell on me. Our pleasure. The Sierra Madre Middle School, P.T.S.A., Brooke Sample. We have trouble every year with the elementary and the middle school, no matter what we do. Okay, the Sierra Madre Playhouse, I saw both of you here. Okay. The Sierra Madre Public Library, Doreen Thomas. Just in time. And lastly, the Sierra Madre Rose Float Association, Evelyn Schaefer. Anybody? Hey, thank you for doing what you guys do. Thank you very much. Now, if, before any of you leave, I need you all to go outside in the rotunda so we can take some pictures for the newspaper. So we're all going to get up and quietly go, and then you can come back in a few months. Thank you for letting me.
Thank you, Ms. Beckham. All right, as people are filing out, we'll continue on with the meeting here. Our next item on the agenda is an update on the municipal electric vehicle fleet from Management Analyst Lozick. Why don't we just give a minute or so to get the doors closed back there? Thank you, Chief.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Honorable Counsel, and I do apologize if this presentation is not as exciting as those, but... Okay, so thank you for this opportunity to provide the update on the Sierra Madre City Fleet Transition Efforts under the California Air Resources Board and the Advanced Fleet Regulation. Since our last presentation on the municipal fleet electrification, the city has made significant progress in aligning with the state's evolving regulatory framework. Tonight's presentation offers an overview of what ACF entails, how it applies to Sierra Madre's fleet, and the coordinated forward-thinking steps we've taken to ensure a responsible and cost-conscious compliance strategy. So to begin, I'd like to review the ACF regulation and to provide a little bit of a background. So the Advanced Clean Fleet, or ACF, which you'll see in this presentation, regulation was adopted by the California Air Resources Board in April of 2023. It applies to on-road vehicles owned or operated by public agencies with a gross vehicle weight rating of over eight thousand five hundred pounds. The regulation has two primary components, a reporting requirement and a purchasing requirement. So under this reporting requirement, all qualifying vehicles must be reported annually through CARB's Truck Regulation Upload Compliance and Reporting System. This is also known as Trucks for short. This includes documenting exempt vehicles, current fleet inventory, and vehicle usage data. So under the purchasing requirement, agencies must choose two compliance pathways to govern future vehicle acquisitions. So the first one is the ZEV, which stands for Zero Emission Vehicles Purchase Schedule, and this is illustrated through the bar graph or chart here in the slide. And this requires that fifty percent of qualifying new vehicles or purchases be zero emission by 2024, increasing to one hundred percent in 2027. Now, the alternative or secondary option is the ZEV Milestone Option. So what this says is it allows agencies to phase in qualifying ZEVs based on fleet-wide percentages by vehicles, class, and year. And this is also illustrated within the slide, looking at this chart, and we could take a look. So, for example, the chart shows that under work trucks in the year of 2027, the city would have to convert ten percent of its vehicle fleet to EVs, or the qualifying vehicles would have to be EVs by that. And moving on into the year of 2030, this would mean that twenty-five of the qualifying vehicles would have to be EVs. So this is an example to showcase those two options. Moving on to city fleet applicability. The city operates over ninety-five vehicles and equipment units across all departments. Following CARB guidance, staff identified that thirty-one of our vehicles and units are subject to ACF reporting. The remaining units, trailers, off-road equipment, patrol vehicles, and fire suppression assets either fall below the eight thousand five hundred pound threshold or qualify under formal exemption categories. All eligible vehicles have been entered into the Trucks Reporting System, and applicable exemptions have been fully documented. Furthermore, I am very proud and happy to announce that the city has completed and certified its 2025 Trucks Fleet Report, fulfilling the state's annual reporting requirement under ACF. To better understand the compliance in a broader context, staff reviewed regional submissions and found that two out of the thirty-one cities in the San Gabriel Valley and four out of the eighty-eight cities in Los Angeles County have completed this ACF reporting, highlighting both the complexity of the regulation and the city of Sierra Madre's leadership in taking early organized action. And this would mean that the city of Sierra Madre now would be the third out of the thirty-one cities in San Gabriel Valley and the fifth in all of Los Angeles County to do so. Concurrently, staff is updating long-range fleet planning, reviewing replacement timelines, fuel efficiency, maintenance cycles, and identifying logical candidates for future electrification. Moving on for actions taken to date, staff has coordinated with the CARB's Air Resources Supervisor to verify proper reporting procedures and exemption classification. Moreover, the city has met with the Clean Power Alliance, and the Clean Power Alliance has issued the city a non-competitive participation agreement for the Energized Communities Program, putting the city in the position to secure two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in technical support for infrastructure readiness, technical site assessments, and one-on-one fleet planning assistance. And this is in-kind support, so not direct assets or funding that we could use, but it would be a value of in-kind support. Furthermore, staff has met with SoCal Edison to initiate participation in their Charge Ready Program, and this is a SoCal Edison option which provides comprehensive support for EV charging infrastructure. Under this pathway, SoCal Edison covers the cost for site design, utility side electrical upgrades, and construction, including trenching, conduit, and panel installation, so a lot of technical assistance. Under this plan, the city is responsible only for procuring chargers from SoCal Edison's approved vendor list and submitting a ten-year infrastructure development plan. We are also in active collaboration with the Enterprise Fleet Management Program, which is conducting a comprehensive fleet analysis and exploring a long-term fleet management partnership. This engagement includes a ten-year cost projection using lifecycle planning models, a review of the past five years of fleet acquisition and utilization, a proposed EV transition roadmap beginning in fiscal year 2026 and '27, evaluation of ongoing services such as open-ending leasing, maintenance management, and fleet planning technology platforms. And lastly, staff continues to engage with the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, Southern California Air Quality Management District, to align with regional best practices to identify additional funding opportunities such as the Carl Moyer Program, which is the state funding grant initiative. So moving on to our path forward, the city will continue to update the Trucks Reporting System annually as vehicles are acquired, retired, and ensuring continued alignment with state requirements. Through the Energized Communities Program with the Clean Power Alliance, the city can initiate site evaluations for EV charger development using technical assessments and fleet usage data to guide placement and capacity planning. In parallel, our consultation with SoCal Edison under the Charge Ready Program focuses on identifying and potentially upgrading utility site infrastructure, with SoCal Edison covering and associated installation costs to prepare selected sites for charger installation. Enterprise is finalizing its analysis to help the city align vehicle replacement with operational needs, fiscal realities, and long-term efficiency. Staff is also evaluating whether the ZEV Purchase Schedule or the ZEV Milestones Option, which I spoke about earlier, offers the best strategic fit for the city's evolving fleet. We will continue to pursue grant funding opportunities while maintaining active engagement with regional agencies to ensure access, shared resources, insight, and implementation support. So in summary, staff is taking a structured, proactive approach to ACF compliance backed by data, funding, and inter-agency collaboration. The city has successfully completed and submitted its 2025 Trucks Fleet Report, meeting the state's regulatory requirement and establishing a clear foundation for planning future infrastructure improvements and fleet upgrades. Our evolving fleet strategy is centered on total cost of ownership, factoring in fuel, maintenance, and lifecycle value, and will be supplemented by the insights provided by Enterprise's forthcoming report. So at the next city council meeting taking place on June 10th, we hope to have Enterprise Fleet Management present to the council a detailed plan that includes a ten-year lifecycle cost analysis, a comparison of past versus optimized acquisition strategies, a phased EV transition roadmap, and recommendations to reduce cost per mile, streamline replacement cycles, and minimize vehicle downtime. So at this time, council, staff recommends that council receive and file this report. We will return with implementation requests and policy actions as planning continues. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Management Analyst Lozick. Is there any quick, yes, Councilmember Goss?
I'm curious about the Enterprise Fleet Management consultation. Are they just doing that to provide consultation services, or do they actually provide leased vehicles and service for those vehicles?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Goss. They do a host of different things. It's a very detailed and comprehensive analysis, and I do, and I would like to invite you to listen to their presentation coming up to the next council meeting. They do partner regionally with some prominent cities, South Pasadena, Pasadena, San Marino, Duarte, and so forth, and the level of detail that they will provide will hopefully answer questions such as yours.
So they're not just consulting, but they're actually providing vehicles and service in some kind of partnership with cities?
Yes, Councilmember Goss, part of the service that they offer is looking at vehicle acquisition, and that would include leasing options, purchasing, and so they offer a whole host of things, including maintenance, and it's a really wonderful program, so.
When did you say that they're gonna be?
So we hope to invite them and for them to present during the next council meeting taking place on June 10th.
Thank you, thank you. Great report.
Thank you, Analyst Lozick. Great report, thank you. And I just wanna say hats off to you and staff for, within the last couple weeks, getting us from where we were to being in compliance, so kudos to you and staff for that. I just wanna kinda wrap my head around the thirty-one vehicles in our current fleet that would be applicable. So I think you said gross vehicle weight rating of, was it eight thousand pounds or more? So I would think the cars like the Bolts wouldn't count, but maybe something like a pickup truck? Can you just help me understand what type of vehicles in our fleet would need to be part of this?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Garcia. So, yes, you're correct, it would apply to vehicles that are only over the weight of eight thousand five hundred pounds. So in other words, this would only qualify for those types of vehicles, and any emergency type of vehicle. And also a key point to factor into this is that if the vehicle is new, or I'm sorry, used, then it wouldn't comply with the regulation. So any sort of vehicle that we acquire that was used, it wouldn't need to be submitted under this report. And as you mentioned, so any emergency vehicle, that would be our police, fire, or any units that would be a non-road vehicle, it would also not qualify under that rule or that regulation. So in essence, as I mentioned, the city of Sierra Madre has a vehicle fleet inventory of over ninety-five units, and by units, I mean vehicles and equipment, items like that. So we identify that only thirty-one out of that entire fleet and unit inventory would qualify under this regulation. That would need to be reported, and that's what we reported.
So just to follow up on that, so on slide one where you've got that fifty percent, you know, per year out to a hundred percent in 2027 and beyond, that is only for thirty-one of our ninety-five fleet are required to be EVs according to the CARB rules? Is that right?
Well, again, I thank you for your question, Mayor. This would only apply to vehicles that are over eight thousand five hundred pounds. They would need to be new, and they would need to be not, an emergency vehicle. So meeting that criteria, again, there's a very strict guideline of what that would need to be. So if the vehicle, in other words, is under eight thousand five hundred pounds, we wouldn't need to report that.
And so how many of the ninety-five fleet vehicles are emergency vehicles? About?
I don't have an exact number on the top of my head, but I would estimate around twenty-five, somewhere around there. Or maybe a little bit more, but I don't have the exact figure in front of me.
So, okay, and just horseshoes and hand grenades at this point. So that means, the way I'm looking at it is that there are thirty-one that are large vehicles that apply. So there are twenty-five that are emergency vehicles, so that's, let's just call it fifty-five, right? And so then there's another forty vehicles in there that are kind of, they're not exempt and they don't apply. And so there's that area, so what are the thoughts about those forty vehicles that fall out of the other two categories?
Thank you, Mayor. So for those vehicles, we wouldn't necessarily need to consider them as part of this regulation, meeting that fifty percent compliance and then going on to one hundred percent compliance in 2027. So those emergency vehicles would be exempt, and that's the status that they fall under, under the Trucks system of reporting.
So as part of our conversations with Enterprise and looking at options, has there been any conversation about those forty vehicles?
Thank you, Mayor, for your question. Those vehicles will be considered, and I do, I would like to add that as part of Enterprise's Fleet Management Program, they're going to offer a detailed analysis of milestones, when we could expect vehicles to retire, per se. But we're also gonna offer them the odometer reading so we can have a full kind of scope of what to expect with maintenance, service, expectation, and when we could see those vehicles possibly transitioning to EVs. And that's part of their service and also part of our internal analysis within our vehicle fleet.
Mayor, if I may add, so we know that thirty-one vehicles qualify for the program. The other vehicles that you're talking about, the strategy is, if we were to partner with Enterprise, is that we look at the total cost of ownership, and that includes the vehicle, energy costs, whether it be gas or electric, maintenance cost, resale value, all that, and the use. If it's a public works vehicle and it's a heavy-duty vehicle and it needs to be used in emergencies, how frequently can we charge it? All those things are being taken into consideration, and the idea is that fleet will purchase the vehicle that makes the most sense, whether it's electric or not, whether it qualifies for the program or not at that time. I think it's a little premature to talk about which vehicles at this point, and the Enterprise study will show a little bit more detail, and those other vehicles will be considered, whether gas or electric, when the time is appropriate.
So as a part of the Enterprise program, they'll look at a number of criteria to be able to evaluate every purchase of a vehicle going forward?
Correct.
That's fantastic. Great. Then, so I know there's two other questions here, I'm gonna ask one more and then turn it over. If we're considering Enterprise, is this something that we would have to go out for an RFP for? Is it something that we could adopt? What's the procurement rules associated with that? And it's fine to say we can cover that on June 10th, but I'm just kind of curious, before we lock right in with Enterprise, what our options are and what are the requirements?
Thank you again for the question, Mayor. So there are a number of cities that partner with Enterprise already, so we could look to see if we could piggyback on an RFP that's already in place. They also are a SourceWell qualified vendor, which means we purchase our vehicles, one of our options is to purchase our vehicles through the SourceWell, they're a pre-approved vendor. Fleet Enterprise offers the same SourceWell price, they are a SourceWell-approved vendor, so we could buy the vehicles now from Enterprise. And we'll have more details on how that program works at the next council.
Councilmember Creep, I think I saw, okay.
Yeah, just to follow up, and I think you answered this two weeks ago, but I wanna make sure I understand the program, because you know these programs. So is the state or CARB, or are they expecting us to be fifty percent on our entire fleet of the subset? Or are we talking about new purchases?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Garcia. So the aim is for the transition of EV vehicles, but I do wanna go to your point and say that this would only apply for new purchases. So the recent four vehicles that the city acquired, those were used, or two of those were used vehicles, and they actually don't apply to the regulations. So the Boom Truck and the F-250 that was purchased in October, they actually don't apply because they're used vehicles.
So the state's not mandating us to mothball perfectly good vehicles that have potentially ten years of life left on them to comply and be wasteful in that? I'm not, wouldn't be surprised if that's what they're asking, but that's not what they're asking? I just wanna make sure I understand. If you know. If you don't know, that's totally, that's totally fine, because again, this is kind of an interesting rule here.
I'm not entirely sure of that interpretation, but I think we could provide more detail on that in the future.
And I know the goal is to get our fleet to all-electric, so, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, and point of clarification, if I can ask, Management Lozick, the four Ranger vehicles that we purchased did not need to be electric vehicle under this program?
That's correct, City Manager Reyno. So those vehicles, the Ford Rangers in particular, they were under the 8,500 pound threshold, so therefore they also did not comply with this regulation. In other words, they're exempt as well.
Great. I'll echo what some of the other folks had. This is an outstanding report and incredible work that you've done in the past two weeks. You guys have really worked really hard to do this, and I am very appreciative of it. Any other questions, comments from the council? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Council.
All right, moving on to consent items. City Clerk, would you please read the consent items by title only?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council is being asked to consider a number of items this evening. The first of the items is Consent A, that's Consideration of Resolution 25-32, Approving Certain Demands. It is staff's recommendation that the City Council approve Resolution 25-32. Item B is the Consideration of Resolution 25-18. It is the consideration of approval of the allocation of additional discretionary payment to CalPERS, California Public Employees Retirement Unfunded Accrued Liability. Say that three times. And it is staff's recommendation that the City Council adopt Resolution 25-18. Consent item C is the Consideration of Resolution 25-33, Approving the Initiation of Proceedings for the Levy and Collection of Assessments and Ordering the Preparation of the Report for the Downtown Landscape and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District for Fiscal Year 2025 and through 2026. Consent item D is the Consideration of Resolution 25-35, Approving and Establishing the Annual Special Taxes for Community Facilities District Number One, and Annual Assessment for East Benita Avenue Sewer Improvement and East Miramanta Avenue Sewer Improvement, and Leaving Special Taxes and Assessments for the Fiscal Year 2025 through 2026. Consent item E is the Consideration of a State Homeland Security Program Subrecipient Agreement. It is staff's recommendation that the City Council authorize the City Manager to enter into agreement with Los Angeles County and the Sierra Madre Police Department for State Homeland Security Grant Funds. Consent item F is the Consideration to Receive and File the 2025 Annual Report of the Development Agreement for the Meadows at Bailey Canyon Project located at 700 North Sunnyside Avenue in Sierra Madre. And lastly, Consent item G is the Consideration to Authorize an Emergency Contract Amendment for Low Pressure Water Main Relocation at Woodland Bridge, Woodland Drive Bridge, excuse me. And it is staff's recommendation that the City Council authorize an emergency amendment to the existing contract with Big Ben in an amount of $276,800. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Great, thank you very much. All right, go through each of the items. Any questions on Consent item A? Consent item B?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I know it's in the staff report, but just for purposes of mentioning it on the record and for folks who are here or watching at home, just a question about this amount that we are authorizing to approve to the CalPERS system. This was in the budget correctly, correct?
Mayor, the Water Department does have the funds in their current budget to cover the funds for the emergency?
No, no, this is for the, this is for the, for the CalPERS donation, or the CalPERS payment.
For that, I'd like to bring up Finance Director Rainey.
No, donation, extra payment, sorry.
Good evening. Yes, this was budgeted, and it's typically at the end of the year, because that's when we basically make the payment to CalPERS, we talk to the actuary and do this. So it's kind of awkward, it's a budgeted item, but we, most cities do it at the end of the fiscal year.
And to clarify, this is the amount that we've been asked to contribute, or this, in years past, we've made additional, not donations, additional payments into the system to reduce our future liabilities? This one falls into which of those categories or both?
This falls into our practice of prepaying and paying it down. It's kind of like prepaying down a mortgage, so that the accrued liability is reduced. And I can tell you, we, when we talked this afternoon with Mr. Garcia, Councilmember Garcia, our unfunded ratio for miscellaneous is at, funded ratio is 79%, almost 80. Our PEPRA miscellaneous is at 98.5% funded. Our PEPRA Safety and Fire is at 97.4%. Our PEPRA Safety Police is at 86.2%. And our safety, public safety, Classic Police Fire, and Classic usually is a bigger piece, it's more costly, is at 82.3%. Plans funded at 90% generally are considered strong. Those between 80% and 90% are adequate and are monitored, but it, compared to a lot of other cities, I would say it's exceptional.
Thank you.
And that begs a new question, so thank you for being up here, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
So, and I think you answered it in your explanation, because the Classic Miscellaneous is at 79%, whereas the Classic Safety is about 82% and change. Why, my question is, why are we funding 100,000, or the recommendation is 100,000 to Safety and 50 to Miscellaneous, but I think, I think you already answered that. Because of the size, is that correct?
It's because of the-
Relative size?
It's because of the relative size. What I did is I asked CalPERS to look at the different accounts and try to retire the account with the lengthiest, so that we'd get more bang for our buck. So it took me a little longer finding this out from them, but that was our strategy this time.
So we're not funding, we're not funding as much to the one that's, has a lower funded percentage because it is a lower?
No, no, and that's because the target is to keep the liability from increasing.
Yes.
So if I can retire future large pieces of the liability, then it will be more cost-effective for the city.
Thank you for that answer.
So to continue your analogy, to sort of put it on personal finance terms, this is like the advice you get to make sure you're paying off your highest interest-charging credit card first, so as to reduce the future liability?
Yes, but generally speaking-
Generally speaking, I know it's not exactly the same, but just people-
Generally speaking, you want to go for your longest debt and your highest, and with those two constructs, it will make it so that the accrued liability will go down much faster than if you just do the regular payments.
Thank you.
That makes sense, thank you.
All right, great questions. Consent item C. Consent item D. Consent item E. Consent item F. Consent item G.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
This, I think, is the question you were maybe going to answer before, but thank you for, I think, preempting the question, or the answer to where this lies in the budget, and I appreciate that the Water Department has funds in its budget to cover this. But my question actually is, is this something that we can include in our application for FEMA reimbursement as a result of damage from the various natural disasters?
I, thank you for the question. I believe that we are going to include this in the recuperation of the FEMA funds, the $276,800 that this change order will have, we're going to proceed that, yes.
But my understanding, based on City Manager's prior remark, was that this is actually, putting aside the reimbursement, this is actually already within the budget, based on the annual budget you have for water main replacements?
Yeah, great question. It is within our 1.3 million plus some development impact fees we have, but to do it now would allowing us being to get reimbursement, yes. And it's a water line, we need to do it.
Thank you.
So, sorry.
Please, no.
I think on that, on that line of questioning, thank you for being here and doing this. This is, this is one of our sources of water, is that correct? It's from the tunnel?
Yeah, correct. This is our low-pressure tunnel line. It does take water, well, when we, when we are facilitying in our tunnels, it will deliver tunnel water to our zone two facilities, yes.
Thank you. And I want to stay inside the scope of what's on the agenda, but I think this question might be, because kind of, we kind of opened the door a little bit. So because of that, are we, we're losing, if it's not operational now, we're not, if water was coming through the tunnel, we're losing that water? And if, while it's being repaired, we're not getting that water either? So we're kind of deficient on water because of this event?
So I'm going to say, I'm going to say no to that. We're always collecting that. That water goes down the channel, is collected at Camilo, and we spread that water into our basins, so we do lose from, you know, when it travels down the channel, we do lose from evaporation, but no, we're collecting that water at all times through our Camilo gate. We capture, I'd love to say 90%, but through our, through our staff, we're almost collecting 100% of that water as it comes down.
So this is a pipe coming out of the tunnel, it's non-operational right now because it was damaged from the mud, the mud flows?
Correct. It was damaged in the mud flows, and we are also trying to actively line the inside of the tunnels. We just, for all intents and purposes, we have to wait till we don't have as much water so we can pump water out of it. We're in a, we're in a weird phase right now. We actually have a lot of water coming from that natural spring where we cannot pump it out in order to line that pipe, so that's why it's off. But like I said again, it's a water line, it's damaged, we have to, we have to fix it to make sure there's no, there's nothing getting inside, so.
And is it going to stay in its current position, or, yeah, is the line going to stay in its current location and risk damage in the future?
No, negative. We're going to, currently, right now, Big Ben is doing the water main project on Woodland above Sunnyside. They're diverting that six-inch water line to the side of the bridge. So right now, they currently, both lines proceed underneath the bridge, very dangerous. This tunnel line also did, it received direct contact from water coming over the dam, and it was the first line that got hit. So it actually blocked the other line, but yeah, it was directly in line. Both, both lines are now going to go on the side of the bridge.
Got it. So this is the bridge where, where some of the boards got pushed up or got, got damaged, actually, kind of, the water and debris knocked the bridges out of, knocked boards out of them, is that correct?
Negative. That was actually one of the residents.
That was the residence, so this is a different location, okay. So this is Woodland, right?
The county bridge that they proceed underneath, we'll be putting them on the side.
Mayor, if I may add, so the, the bridge that you're talking about is a private property bridge, and that was just north of where we're doing this work. The tunnel line right now is out of service for the work that we're going to be doing to line that. So it was out of service during the fires, it was out of service during the mud flows. It did sustain damage as a result of the mud flows, and so we are going to repair it and to make sure that this doesn't happen again, the line is going to get moved from under the bridge to the side of the bridge, so that it's, it won't be subject to debris flows from, from future storms.
And, and so this is, this is skirting the edge of outside the scope, but there was, there was a gas line that was damaged as a part of, of the mud flows as well, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Much lower though.
Is what?
Much lower down on the, on the-
Much lower down, okay. Since that's out of scope, I'll circle back at a different time on that. Okay. Any other questions on item G?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So then we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any comment cards for items on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, there were no comment cards submitted, nor were there any emails.
Great, thank you very much. We'll bring it back for, so we'll close public comment, bring it back for a council discussion. Any discussion on the seven items that we have on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Item B, where we're going to be, we're discussing the unfunded actuary liability. As far as Resolution Number 25-18, it's just my recommendation in the final whereas of the resolution, that we include the language that has the allocation of 50,000 to the miscellaneous classic and 100,000 to the safety classic, just so we have the allocation right there in the, after that last whereas in the resolution.
And that's in the, the-
It's in the staff report, yes.
Great.
So if we just carry the language in the staff report into, into the resolution, I think that would make it a lot more clear.
Good. Any other discussion? All right, then I think the way to do this is, let me just separate B out, and we would approve A and C through G, and then B as amended? Or do we have to do that? We can just do it?
You can approve them all and then just B as amended, or, yeah, B as amended.
Okay, all right. Then I entertain a motion for all with B as amended.
I'm, yeah.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, all right. Now we'll go on to our public hearings. The first public hearing is for Ordinance 1483. Chief Bartlett, you are up.
Good evening, Mayor Parkers, Councilmember Garcia, Goss, and Krebs, as James gets the presentation loaded up. For us, basically, I'm here tonight to present Ordinance 1483 for your consideration and first reading, which pertains to the formal adoption of the updated Fire Hazard Severity Zone map as designated by CAL FIRE and the California Office of the State Fire Marshal. The ordinance aligns directly with Goal Two, Public Safety in the City's 2025 Strategic Plan, and more specifically, it advances our initiative to ensure the fire department is properly equipped to protect Sierra Madre's residents, homes, and wildland interface. Under Government Code Section 51178 and Public Resources Code Section 4202, CAL FIRE is required to classify land within the LRA, or Local Responsibility Areas, excuse me, into Fire Hazard Severity Zones. They have changed, if we've known them from the past, where Sierra Madre just had very high, we now will have moderate, high, and very high. These are based on a combination of factors, including fire, behavior modeling, fuel loads, terrain, ember exposure, and climate data. These designations serve as the basis for implementing key wildlife, excuse me, wildfire mitigation policies, including California's Building Code, Chapter 7A, which governs ignition-resistant construction, and California Fire Code, Chapter 49, which sets standards for defensible space and vegetation clearance. The updated map was provided to the city by CAL FIRE and is being presented tonight for local adoption as permitted by California Fire Code 4911. Adoption of the updated Fire Hazard Severity Zone map as prepared by CAL FIRE for lands within our local responsibility area, these are, again, speaking to the key provisions, is to adopt it, also to enable enforcement of state mandated wildfire risk reduction measures in designated areas, refrain from expanding zones locally. While the local jurisdiction, while the city of Sierra Madre, has the authority to designate additional zones with substantial evidence, staff is not recommending expansion beyond the state's designations at this time. The adopted map will be maintained by the city clerk and fire department and will be accessible to the public via the state's fire, fire marshal website. As far as strategic and fiscal impacts, the, this action supports wildfire preparedness by aligning our local practices with state safety mandates, improving our ability to apply building and vegetation management standards consistently. While there is no direct fiscal impact, we anticipate indirect benefits such as reduced fire suppression costs, enhanced eligibility for grants, and strengthened community resiliency. So staff's recommendations is that City Council conduct the public hearing and introduce Ordinance 1483 for first reading tonight. The final adoption of the ordinance is scheduled for consideration at the regular City Council meeting on June 10th, and upon adoption, the city will forward a certificate, or, excuse me, a certified copy of the ordinance to CAL FIRE. And upon adoption, the city will forward a certificate, or cer, excuse me, a certified copy of the ordinance to CAL FIRE. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any, any questions.
Great. Are there any questions? Councilmember Krebs?
Might be discussion, so just give me one second.
I, I can go ahead and, and start. So the first question is, can you confirm if the map, if it is parcel-specific or does it go cross-parcel at all?
The indicators on the map, there are some cross-parcel lines and demarcation, if you will, from very high to high to moderate. The best way to kind of look at that is through the state's, or excuse me, through CAL FIRE's website, you can actually type in your address and it will give you the zone you are actually in. And it will defer to the higher, the higher zone. So if you have a cross parcel between high and very high, you're gonna default to the very high.
So does, the ordinance doesn't say that though, does it? And do we have to clarify that in the ordinance? Like, I'm trying to figure out where, you know, make sure there isn't confusion in this for people so that it's, you know, it's very clear that what, what severity zone their parcel is in.
Good question. Between, between the high and the very high, there is no difference. You will still, you're still gonna be subject to the Chapter seven A requirements and the like. The high will, will pick that up just as the very high also has. Between moderate and, and the high, there is no Chapter seven A requirements for the moderate. However, if the, if the parcel is in there, within there, again, we can verify that specifically through planning and we can, we can type in their address and it'll indicate where they're at. And that will indicate which, which, which codes that we are going to enforce. As far as the ordinance, to answer your question directly, no, it does not specifically say that. If it's the council's preference, we, we could amend it to, to indicate that.
To, to indicate that if you are cross-parcel that you will be, or that, that we update the map? I mean, I, I guess my feeling, well, we'll go into discussion, so, so I'll, I'll leave that for discussion. Okay.
Can I just ask a follow-up so I understand? So are we saying that the recommendation from staff, if you have a situation where you have a parcel that has multiple designations, that the recommendation would be to have that parcel default to the higher of the two?
Technically, yes, as your, as your question was posed. However, again, if, if there is, and this is just a, a map that was done by modeling, so they did not give parcels into consideration and to that point, the accuracy within inches and feet and everything else, that could be debated, really. So what, what staff is recommending, again, is that we, if, if there's somebody that's going to be doing a remodel, major construction, or, or rebuild, then they're gonna come into planning, they're gonna, they're gonna go through the application process. And at that time, we can, we can enter their address and within the CAL FIRE's website, it will tell us they're either in very high, high, or moderate, or in, or in nothing at all.
And we don't.
At that point, we can, we can impose the, the ordinance as, as it was said.
And we're, and we're not sure, or maybe we are sure, how, well, presumably the CAL FIRE's system that you're, you're referencing is, is harkening back to the map, right? So there's been an assumption built into the address location, address finding system that they've, they've coded into their website. They, they've made some sort of assumption, if you type in your address and your address falls within these, within a situation where you have two different zones. So they've made some sort of assessment on that with some precision, right? Because they, they've obviously had something that, that drove them to decide if you type in your address, it's one versus the other. And we don't, we're not sure what, which, like what the methodology is.
At least my understanding, my, 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 to my knowledge of this, is they're using G I, GIS mapping on this. And they're also, the buffers on there are, I remember right, they're, they're two hundred feet from, from those bands. So if you see the red, I'm gonna go back on a couple of these here. From the red, the very high, and the orange, which is gonna be the high, and the yellow, which will be the moderate. They, they've created that buffer in there. And it's just a matter, a matter of, of feet from those buffers. That, therefore, you do have some cross parcel.
I know.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's a no offense.
Much different than we had on our previous map from two thousand and eleven. Very linear, we used Grandview and all the way across. Consideration was given by staff to implement something similar. But it was staff's decision that basically, as you can see, we do have some people that fell out of the very high into nothing. They're, they're even below moderate. And it was not, didn't seem equitable to keep people into zones that they no longer fall into. And the way that CAL FIRE designed this, there really is no simplistic way to kind of draw lines around our, our community to, to bring parcels all the way out. We, we just, we don't even have that, that, those resources and that ability.
So isn't the idea here, if somebody's in the red, that's a dangerous thing, we have to take it very seriously? So does it really matter whether it's splitting a parcel or not? If there's red in the parcel, we have to protect, right?
Councilmember Goss, I, I would agree with you myself, and that does part of the consideration that, that staff took is, again, there is no difference when we're talking about the ordinance and Chapter seven A compliance between high and very high, or the orange and the red, there's no difference. They're both gonna apply. It's just gonna be a smaller portion of that yellow or the moderate. And again, if, I would assume that the residents would want to be compliant and bring themselves up to, to code and, and make their homes more resilient and protect their property. So erring on the higher or choosing on the higher zone, if you will, that just would make sense to me as well.
And so the whole idea is if we can get the red zone to be in better shape in terms of resiliency, then the rest of us are in better shape, right?
Absolutely. As I said, as we, as we have experienced very recently, it is gonna be a matter of, of hardening our homes. And again, this isn't just on new constructions or heavy remodels. We, we really need to start educating the community on retrofitting the existing homes. That's where a lot of our troubles could lie in the future. Is, is we have thousands of homes that are not retrofitted and are not up to current standards.
So I have a, a question directly related to that. And so where do we look at the trade-off between the hardening our homes and our historic ordinances? So, you know, our, our ordinance, what is it? It is, I'll have to pull it up here, I had it a second ago, yeah. Seventeen sixty fifty-six requires a historic assessment for homes. And if you've got a home that's in the red zone that's considered historic and you want to replace, say, your wooden windows with, say, vinyl windows, that the process seems to be really complicated. And it seems to be very burdensome. And so I think it, it, the, my question is, is that where is the trade-off between that historic status and, and preserving, and creating a defensible space? Or a defensible building, hardening the home?
To be honest with you, I don't think there is a trade-off. I think it's a parallel effort. We want to keep the historical value and.
Is there historical value if the building burns down?
Correct. The, but the way the process would work is, i- if somebody is desiring to do such, they're gonna come in to the planning department, they're gonna go through the application process. And at that point, it could go to the planning commission as well to kind of look to see what they're, they're attempting or wanting to do. But again, they're, they're, we're not gonna look, try to look and take away from the aesthetic purpose of the house. There are some materials out there that can still serve the same purpose, but also comply with safety.
What's, what's?
We can, we can, we can look at the, at the different materials and give variances on some of the things that are required. So for instance, if we're going to replace wood siding, we can probably do that with, with, with some more fire-resistant materials.
What's the, what's the legal requirement for us looking at buildings for older than seventy-five years? Is, is there, is there a state law, is there something in, in the building code? Is there some reason that seventy-five years, we have to have a historic designation?
Mayor, mayor, if I, if I may add, our planning department is working on that and is gonna bring that to council at a future meeting.
Okay, great, okay.
Thank you, city manager, because I would've had, I would've had to punt that one off, I'm not sure.
Go ahead.
Chief, thank you. So I, I'm just trying to think procedurally for your staff. Obviously, when you did vegetation checks for, for mitigation on vegetation, it's pretty easy, everything north of Grand, on the north side of Grandview and above. How's this gonna work with the way the maps are procedurally for you to do your checks and assessments of, of individual properties for vegetation?
It's a great question. It's, it's gonna provide a bigger challenge for us because we will initially need to separate some of these, these addresses out. We can see that a lot of the locations are gonna still remain the same. But we will have to develop a, a, a map and a checklist, if you will, of the, of the changes. Probably just, at least for now, until they redo the maps again, it'll be a one-time burden, but, but we'll be able to manage that and then the addresses and the locations will be what we go out to.
Do you, do you have the resources to manage that? Or does CAL FIRE, will they provide any funds to manage that for us, or?
There, there are no, again, unfunded mandates, as you will, so this will be placed on the burden of, of the department. And we are very resource deprived as far as fire prevention goes. Everybody that we have is employed for suppression and EMS. But we will, we'll figure out a way whether.
Is there any way you, you guys can get together with planning, maybe, with, with their software, whatever they might have to, to help you streamline this? Because I, I feel like this is gonna be a pretty big task for your staff and especially how staffed we are. Once, we, once, once these changes go into place, we have to follow them, right?
That's correct, yes. You know, that, that was part of the plan for the community risk reduction officers to bring on, to be a part of this and to outline all this, to set up the inspection schedules and the locations. Until that, that position is funded, it will, the department and my staff, at least administrative staff and suppression side, will have to, have to burden that.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, did you have something to add, or?
I just wanted to add, Councilmember Garcia, that, that the position was created, we're just looking for a way to fund the position.
Gotcha, thank you.
Councilmember Krebs, did you have more?
Yeah, I just had a follow-up. I think, you know, you actually covered the gist of what I was gonna ask, but we, in part of the discussion that we just had around, you know, these cross parcels and what we're defaulting to, I think you'd mentioned that, that the Building Code seven A requirements would not be applicable to the moderate zone. But the actual resolution or, or ordinance that we're looking at adopting actually does apply, does state that the seven A requirements would be applicable for both, for all three, a very high, high, and moderate. So I'm just not sure if, if, sort of where, where, where we're at on that. If there's a disconnect between the recommendation and what the actual ordinance says, or whether, whether you misspoke, I just wanna make sure that we're, we're considering it. Because that would be, I think, an expansion beyond, I think, what's required currently by the state, correct?
Correct. And it was not the intent of the ordinance to include the moderate zones under the seven A, Chapter seven A requirements. It, it was more in an attempt to identify all three zones and where applicable, the seven, Chapter seven A would be applied.
Yeah, I think, I mean.
Is this section three?
Yeah, I mean, it looks pretty clear.
Looks pretty clear, yeah.
That development permitting and construction within moderate shall comply with. And then it goes on to say, Chapter seven A and Fire Code, Chapter forty-nine. So I do think that that's probably something we will need to, if that's the direction of the council, talk about in discussion and whether we want to include that.
Yeah, it, as, as far as staff is concerned, that, that could be omitted from the ordinance. The, the term moderate could be omitted, and I, I believe it would still stand up to what the, the intent of the ordinance and, and what CAL FIRE is trying to accomplish.
I think a follow-up, just so, if, when we get to discussion, we're clear. I'm looking at section three, B, and A has to do with seven A, but B has to do with defensible, defensible space. And it says, California Fire Code, Chapter forty-nine and Government Code, Section fifty-one-one-eight-two, defensible space clearance and vegetation management. Is, is there, is there allowances for moderate within Chapter forty-nine? So maybe we need to keep moderate in there for that part, but not for seven A?
My interpretations and, and my studies of, of this moderate will not, will not apply to moderate.
Even for vegetation?
Correct.
Okay, that makes it cleaner. Thank you.
A question on section two. We have a, a link to the public map, which is like a couple clicks down. Is it typical for us to, to include websites in there, or do we often, do we make those PDFs so it's, so it's very clear to people where, what the designation is? And I, I recognize the difficulty with, with the maps you were talking about before, so I'm, I'm trying to think of like, what's, what's the right level on this?
As, as we've mentioned in section two, is the, there is a PDF copy attached to the ordinance and the staff report that will be maintained by the city clerk and the fire department. We also, we included that link to that site, is there's, that's the interactive portion of it, which we don't have. CAL FIRE houses that. And so, again, you could see that there's a sliding scale as I presented at last council meeting. It shows the differences between the two maps. And also, it gives you the ability to type in your address to find out exactly where we're at. So we, we did wanna include that link for those purposes. But again, it is not the, the sole intent to have that link to drive people to the map.
And it does say incorporated by reference into this ordinance. So it's, the, the, the map is incorporated by reference, so there will be a, a document attached to, to the ordinance that will be there. And, and then there's the website as well?
Correct. And, and it was submitted as part of staff's, staff report and the ordinance as well. Both maps, if I, if I remember correctly, the, the old two thousand and eleven map and the current two thousand and twenty-five map were attached.
Councilmember Krebs, did you?
Yes, just a quick question on that link. I, you know, we can talk about it more in discussion, but there would be no, I, I'm not sure exactly how CAL FIRE is set up, but to the extent that this is a link to something that's on their website, there'd be nothing, nothing that would prevent them, you know, a year from now, from updating the map at that location and doing something different than, you know, outside of the, you know, intent or purposes of this, of this resolution, right? Because it's, it's a live, live link. Or maybe their practice would be that, that, that would be a separate, a separate map, a new map.
Good question, to which I don't have a definitive answer, being as they are a separate agency. However, historically, until recently, when the new maps came out, that twenty-eleven map, two thousand and eleven map, existed on their website in perpetuity until the change. So I would anticipate that this new map will, will remain the same until down the road they come out with something else.
Great, thank you.
So the, the, just to, to follow up on that, so the twenty-eleven map is, is down at the parcel level, but the twenty-twenty-five map is, is not. It's much more general. Is there a twenty-twenty-five map that is at the parcel level that's a PDF?
No, there is not. Not that, not that we've been, we've been issued. But again, if, through that link and going to CAL FIRE's website, when you type in your address, you can actually zoom in on it a lot easier.
Yeah.
As, like I said, it's a, it's a web version of it. But a PDF, no.
So, so, City Attorney Gargosian, I'm, I'm, how does, do these maps, I mean, I'm trying to figure out, you know, as Councilmember Krebs was saying, like, the, the website changes over time, yet we don't have a, a map that has that level of detail. Like, how are regulations dealing with those modern-day disconnected realities?
Well, as the fire chief said, they, they do take into account, they must take into account parcels, because you can search the parcel on the website. So they must take it into account. Now, whether or not the map delineates the boundaries of the parcel is, that was the fire marshal's call and that's what he went with. But to Councilmember Krebs' point about the updating of the maps, they're not gonna be updated, is my understanding. It's like the, it's like the housing element cycle. That thing gets updated every eight years and that's it, and they don't touch it for the next, until the next cycle. Now, it's not on an eight-year cycle like the housing element, but they have a cycle that they follow. So I don't suspect it'll be amended. So I understand it's a live map and the concern might be that it's gonna be amended between now and whenever the next scheduled update is going to be. But it's my understanding that they don't update that map.
All right.
That, that kind of jogged a question for me. So, so if we're thinking about the website, and I have no experience with the website, when you input a resident's address, is it landing on a page that says you are in very high? Or is it land on the map that you can zoom into?
It will actually, it'll take that map and zoom in for you.
But it doesn't, it won't state that this address is very high or moderate?
It does state. Yes, sir, I verified that today before the meeting.
Okay.
In anticipation of some of these. And put my own address in there, and yes, it'll zoom in and text, in a little text box on the side.
Okay.
Tells you in bold letters where you're at.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Great. Then let's go ahead and open this up for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any comment cards?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards submitted for this public hearing, although we did receive one email, and that was forwarded to the city council in advance of the meeting.
Great, okay. I'll close public comment and bring it back to discussion. So we've, this is an ordinance for first reading, so let's open it up to discuss what we think of it and any changes we need to make.
So how much can we change and still be first reading tonight?
Everything.
Okay, fantastic. We're not going to change everything, Chief, because you did a great job. Yeah, my concern, I think, one of them is that link, I don't know, because this is an ordinance, right? This isn't a resolution. I don't know if we want to start having a pattern and practice of putting links in our ordinances. When links can go dead, they can change, not just the substance on the, but they can, they can change where it lands. You see this all the time. So I don't know if we need some kind of referencing that says the map that's currently, as of today, on this website. Do we need something even to that detail? But again, maybe not just for this ordinance, but for all ordinances. Do we want to be referencing a certain website within our ordinances?
I mean, my personal feeling is that we, if we're going to put a link in, it should be to our website so that we have control over it. I don't, I mean, obviously here, it's not possible because of the nature of this, you know, it's not just a site, it's an interactive, you know, I don't know what to call it technically, but obviously that we don't maintain. I mean, it seemed to me, and that's why I was asking the question, that this link is, to me, more of a resource and more of additional information. Now, I do get concerned because of this notion that we talked about initially, about defaulting to whatever criteria the state has applied to this notion of like, if you're in a in-between place, that the, you know, that this website will sort of make the designation as to where your address lies if you are on a, in an area that's, you know, in an in-between zone, or in a double designated zone. So then it makes me a little concerned that we don't have, you know, if we're basically using that as our final designation, then it maybe becomes more than just a resource. But then I worry about reconciling inconsistencies, right? Because if for some reason the link does change and we have this map, you know, what does it mean to have a map attached to the ordinance that then doesn't match the link that's on the ordinance? And so I feel like that's a Pandora's box that we probably don't want to open. So I mean, I think personally that we should not put the link in the resolution, but provide the link as a resource, and we should bite the bullet and make a decision on these sort of cross parcel designations and just maybe decide that to the extent that your address is on a parcel that has both, that we just default to the higher.
Explicitly state that within the ordinance.
So, so I agree with the idea of not having a link in there. I think that the problems you've stated are very clear. I do, I am wrestling with how to, at what point to move something from one zone to another. So I'm looking at my neighbor's house right behind me, and there's like two small parts of it that go into the high severity zone. And the vast majority of it is in the, is in high, and it, but there's corners of it that are in very high. And that seems like a lot, it seems pretty arbitrary that if it just touches it and just goes over it, that you're automatically into the next one up. So I don't know, I don't have a good, I don't have a good answer to that, yeah.
What are the repercussions for that you're worried about?
Well, I think it's the, well, between the high and very high, I'm not worried. Between the high and moderate, I'm worried, right? Because high and very high, as I understand it, and Chief, correct me if I've got this wrong, there isn't a huge difference in what you're required to do. But between high and moderate, yeah, there's a difference there, and so is that?
In terms of development, in terms of enforcement, right? You're talking about, so if we took moderate out, would that work?
It may also impact insurance premiums, it's possible.
Do we know that?
Well, we know that the designation impacts insurance premiums. What I don't know is.
The designation isn't there whether we adopt this or not, right? So they go off that, they don't go off whether it's adopted in a city ordinance.
Right. What I don't know is whether the designation of very high, high, and moderate, that difference impacts anything at all for the insurance premiums? That part, I don't know. And that might matter for purposes of your conversation regarding how to designate if it's a certain percentage of the property.
Mayor, what's the address that you're concerned? I'm actually on the thing. I'm interested to see what Cal Fire, how Cal Fire designates the property.
So let's go and look at three fifty-one East Laurel is the one that I'm actually looking at right now. Because this is where it makes a difference. So this is down Cannon, Cannon Laurel, it's the second lot in. And so if we look at it, you know, there is, the northeast corner of that lot is in the high zone, but the rest of it is in moderate. Now, if we are going to say, if it is, that little bit of it, and it touches the edge of the building, if we say that that part of it puts it into high, that's going to be different than what the Cal Fire site says. So I mean, to me, I'm not, I don't have the training to be able to make that decision. I think that, you know, the, as the chief was saying, the designation that Cal Fire makes is the one that we should go with.
Is there a way, maybe this is a question for planning, and I know we have, we have planning department here, but is there a way if, if that section of the building, of the building or the structure is in high and the rest is in moderate, if you're planning on remodeling or doing anything, touching that part of the structure, that has to be within those certain rules, whereas the other part of the structure doesn't? Is that, is that something we can do?
You mean if we take moderate out of it?
If we take moderate out, then you can potentially have a parcel that's both high and moderate. And then on that parcel can be a structure that's part of it's in high and part of it's in moderate.
So in this one, we're just a corner, then it's likely that we're going to, it'll be okay?
Well, I'm just saying maybe if you want to replace some windows on that corner, those have to be within standards, because they are technically within the map.
If the building is in that corner of the lot where it's red.
So, so, hold on, timeout just for a second, because there's an important language that's on the website that I think will help to guide our discussion. And it says that the geographic center of this parcel, so the way that I'm reading, that Cal Fire is doing this, and Chief, correct me, is that it's looking at the geographic center of the parcel, not, it's not subdividing into other parts. So that's something I just figured out in taking a look at this, so.
So what does it designate that property? I can't get, my phone doesn't, display doesn't properly.
So, so the parcel I'm looking at, does it as moderate?
Because the geographic center is moderate?
Yes.
Okay.
Makes sense.
And I think we should, if that's.
Default to Cal Fire.
Well, no, but I think we should actually articulate that standard in our ordinance, not just say whatever the Cal Fire link says, because we don't know if that will change. Or, I mean, I'm just going to play devil's advocate, or to the point that we were talking about earlier, I think Mayor Parker's brought this up, like, are we sort of parsing hairs here in that if we have a property that's that close to the red or the orange, are we concerned that, you know, we're sort of creating a situation where they're not then going to be subject to any of the, you know, vegetation management, you know? Yeah, I'm just saying, like, I mean, I, people may have different opinions about whether, you know, just because half of your lot is and half of your lot isn't.
Right.
You know, which sort of, which, which you should default it. Now, I don't mind the Cal Fire designation, if that's what we want, but we should probably have a policy discussion about, beyond just sort of how to designate it, like, what do we think is the right thing to do?
Well, the right thing to do is to protect the city if we can. I don't know that designating things in the very high zone does that, but it seems to me that the geographic center is in high as opposed to very high, or moderate as opposed to high, then the implication is that that's not as dangerous, but this ordinance says we're going to treat them all three the same. So that implied in that is that, anything that's in color here is actually a risk to the city.
So, but is it?
I don't know.
So I thought that.
Cal Fire says, I don't know.
Well, no, but I think that's an important point, is that I don't think that that's what the, what Cal Fire is saying. Cal Fire is saying that it's high and very high, that have to have the, you know, they meet the chapter seven A and the other part, the fire code chapter forty-nine and the government. So, so to me, if we start at that part of it, I'd almost propose dropping moderate out, because that's what's required right now.
I mean, that's a different, like, that's a different point. I think we can get to that. But like, let's stick with this notion of how are we going to?
Yes.
How are we going to reconcile these mixed lots?
Yeah, and I'm taking Cal Fire for wanting to, we're here to protect our city, but I think Cal Fire also has that lens, right? So I'm totally fine with taking moderate out and then using their definition of the geographic center of your parcel.
Okay.
Personally, that's me.
I can do that, sure.
And using their online maps?
Well.
Well, who's going to measure geographic center, then?
They will. So, I mean, they actually measure it.
Well, if a resident wants to find out, though.
You can go to the website and you can find it out.
And this website will tell you where the geographic center is?
It'll tell you, you put in, as Chief was saying, and I.
Will tell you what you're.
You put in your address, and it says this parcel, based on this geographic center, it is, and it tells you what that is.
So I think the city attorney had that comment.
It was actually in regard to what the mayor was saying. I wanted to actually ask staff if they had the ability to overlay a parcel map or a map of all the parcels in the city with a base map of the different fire zones. I don't know if that was possible.
So that's the way it is on the website. It actually, you can look at it, you can see the parcel lines on it, you can see the building edges on it.
So, but as an attachment to the ordinance is what I was saying, I don't know if that's possible. So that's the question I want to pose to, because if it's not possible, if we don't have that ability, I don't know that we could have it as a separate attachment.
That's the next part of the question that I had, right? Is that do we, do we feel comfortable relying on the website, as you were saying, it doesn't change, versus being able to download their map and have it as a resource so that people can look at it versus bringing it up on a screen? Like, we're in this kind of area between codes that, and technology that has the map on it versus written codes.
I think if we designate, if we say that we're relying on their designation, which we understand to be based on the geographic center, I think if we say that in our ordinance, that will, then if something changes and they've decided to designate it some different way, then we'll have at least the ability to come back and decide whether we want to keep the geographic center, and is that something we can actually calculate if the state does something else?
Okay.
That way, I think we've sort of created this, like, if there is an inconsistency, how are we reconciling it? And we are, we've already said in our ordinance that we're basing it on the geographic center. At, you know, so that, so that we have a standard, and then if that standard changes, you know, in the Cal Fire maps, then we can, you know, then we'll have to decide whether we update our ordinance to update to the new methodology, or whether we then figure out if we can actually do that calculation on our own.
Can you motion that?
I'm sure we could, actually, I mean.
Can you motion that?
I can motion that.
Well, are there other changes to the, to the ordinance that we've got?
We already discussed section three, right?
That's what we've been, we're going to take moderate out of section three, and then we're going to change section two to reference the Cal Fire information and the designation of the geo, what's it?
Geographical center.
Whatever verbiage they use.
Yes. Are there other comments on the, on the ordinance?
Nope.
No.
Okay. Then, City Attorney, can we vote on this for, as amended, or?
Yes, you can.
Okay. So then I will entertain a notion, a notion, a motion for ordinance fourteen eighty-three.
So move, as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right. Do we need to take just a five-minute break for bathroom? Yeah, let's take a five-minute break. It is seven thirty-four, we'll come back, seven thirty-five, we'll come back at seven forty. Getting back to order at seven forty-five. Uh, next item on the agenda is Police Captain Veronica Salsito, right?
Yes, sir, how are you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so let's, uh, Assembly Bill four eighty-one.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Veronica Salsito, Acting Captain for the Sierra Madre Police Department. I'm here to share with you California Assembly Bill four eighty-one. It was enacted to increase transparency and oversight regarding the use of military equipment. Uh, back in twenty twenty-one, Governor Newsom signed into a law, AB four eighty-one, which we'll talk about tonight. And City of Sierra Madre signed into their city ordinance fourteen fifty-six in twenty twenty-two. There are fifteen types of equipment categorized as military equipment, of which Sierra Madre Police Department utilizes four categories. Pepperball, rifles, and unmanned aerial systems. And we recently retired our less lethal bean bags. So now we're to three. The following is a summary of the active equipment that is categorized under the Assembly Bill four eighty-one. We currently have, uh, three forty-millimeter less lethal launchers, two pepperball tactical launchers, three Daniel Defense rifles, which are especially assigned to our FSET, otherwise known as our SWAT, who receives additional training, so they're not in use by our patrol members. In addition to that, we have our six Smith and Wesson rifles and three unmanned aerial systems. We are looking into and proposing an addition of an additional unmanned aerial system that's going to be deployable in inclement weather. Uh, with the recent fires that we had, we found it was very difficult to deploy our current fleet. So we're gonna look at proposed costs and visit that for our next year's acquisition. Currently, we receive local, state, federal grants. We also participate in a repurposing program in which it allows us to repurpose retired equipment such as our bean bags, our less lethal options, so that we can then reutilize the funds for new acquisitions. There's also two programs to be aware of in law enforcement agencies, Program twelve oh eight and ten thirty-three, which are a part of the National Defense Authorization Act. Um, Program twelve oh eight offers funds that are tracked to advance women, peace, and security for recruitment, training, exercises, and meaningful meaningful participation. As well as Program ten thirty-three is a National Defense Authorization Act that authorizes the Department of Defense to transfer any excess DOD property for federal, state, and local use in which are primarily used for counterterrorism as well as counter-drug operations. We currently do not participate or have any equipment that is funded or provided through these two programs. With council's approval, uh, we will be continuing to offer our less lethal options as a, uh, less lethal safety as well as patrol options for incident response to various calls for service and tactical response. We currently conduct tracking of all incidents, deployments, as well as use of any of this equipment categorized under AB four eighty-one. Uh, all of our staff are specially trained for all of this equipment in addition to annual refresher training. And our Sierra Madre Police Department policy reflects well above the legal requirements with training, tracking, and deployable, uh, deployment of these equipment and use. We currently have had zero complaints, zero unauthorized use, and zero use of any of this equipment on any people. We mainly use this equipment, the less lethal option, for wildlife, in which we accurately document any deployed use. If approval is denied by council, unfortunately, we'll have to remove this equipment from our less lethal options, which means we will no longer authorize our department personnel to deploy or have these less lethal options. Uh, we will also have to make multiple changes to our operation policy, our deployment criteria, as well as our manual, which effectively will cause a negative impact to our public safety if we have to remove this equipment. Therefore, staff is recommending that we approve and renew the military equipment use policy and continue use of these outlined equipment. And at this time, I'll take any questions.
Questions?
Just procedurally, I I mean, I guess I sort of understood this to be a requirement to provide an annual report as to the, you know, nature of the equipment covered by this bill and the use and and, you know, of the very, very good report that you gave. I guess the approval aspect of it caught me a little bit off guard, because I think we have, you know, approved a policy, and this I understood to be sort of the requirement to to provide reporting each year. So I'm just not quite sure where our approval fits in. So I I don't know if someone just procedurally wants to weigh in on kind of the action here, because I would have, I guess, sort of expected this to be a receive and file as a as a public, uh, reporting, um, under the statute.
Sure, and I can address that. So under Government Code Section seventy seventy-two, it requires that AB four eighty-one be approved by the governing body annually. Um, it also requires us to report on any use or, uh, use and applications of these equipment outlined in four eighty-one, as well as any public complaints, of which we have done.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Thank you.
So a follow-up to that, on the use, I don't see, there wasn't anything in the staff report, there's nothing in the presentation on the use. So what are the the reporting requirements around the use of of the four eighty-one equipment?
So we have a specific policy that requires all applications of force, whether less lethal or lethal, to be reported and documented, as well as investigated by our supervisory staffed, uh, staff. Specifically, this, uh, past annual, uh, report, we have only had applications with our forty-millimeter for wildlife purposes. And I can provide those numbers. Uh, we had between twenty twenty-four, we had three hundred and sixty-six calls for service for bears. And we deployed eighteen, or we had eighteen uses of the pepperball. Other than that, um, we have no reported use on humans and no additional reported use of any other equipment.
So eighteen uses of the pepperball in in calendar twenty twenty-four on bears?
Correct.
Got it. Do you have any of the the detailed statistics on the the UAVs? Um, I I I don't know if, yeah, the UASs, excuse me.
Yeah, most of our UAS use is for overviews. Uh, we also helped with code enforcement, providing pictures, uh, aerial views. And we currently do not have any, um, unmanned aerial systems that are deployable inside homes. Um, we also deploy them for bear calls.
So the one
Don't have stats.
You don't have stats?
Not available tonight.
Okay. Would it be possible to get stats on those?
Yeah, definitely.
That would be, I think that would be helpful. So you said that that we don't have one that can, uh, a UAS that can fly in inclement weather, and we don't have one that can enter homes? Is are those two, if we were to modify or we to get, um, or exchange, get other UASs, would it be two different units or the same unit?
Um, we would recommend two different units. Because the size for the residential entry is gonna be a lot smaller compared to the inclement weather one, which will typically have a larger battery size because it has more capabilities.
And how old are the UASs that we have?
They're about five to six years old, which is, in technology terms, outdated. But they are useful, usable, and we do regularly deploy them.
And and these can be funded through state low, local and federal grants, right?
Correct.
Okay. I've asked a lot of questions. Others, sorry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so thank you for your report, Acting Captain Salsito. So, uh, previously, when we've had these reports, we have also had included, um, and I think maybe this is part of the approval, requests for requisitions or or acquisitions. Um, I do see there's ten ten rifles in here and some ammo, things of that nature, but I I'm hearing other potential items such as the the two unmanned, uh, systems.
Well, and and I appreciate your question, council member. Um, the items listed are currently being sought for acquisition, which are listed in our report. Um, but the ones having to do with our unmanned aerial system, we have not, um, researched the cost or sought out the grant. So that's gonna be well past the next annual review.
Okay, so I and I didn't know if it needed to be on here, um, in even if it's a wish list item, right? Because I think in previous years, we actually had wish list items, uh, within this report. And if and if the oral report is is sufficient enough as well, right? That you're in front of the body, or you're saying that these things are potentially necessary. I I don't know if that if that fits as an oral report, or it has to be in a written report.
Um, pertaining to the Assembly Bill and Government Code Section seven seventy and seventy seventy-two, it doesn't require us to report on a wish list. It requires us to report on current, uh, equipment being sought to be acquired, which are those rifles.
And current inventory. Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Very helpful.
So so to follow up, so in the inventory, you've got the 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 four firearms, but in the report, there's more. You've got the the Remington eight fifty less less lethal shotgun. Did you say that that one has has been retired? That's not the bean bag, so that's different. You've retired the bean bag. What, tell me about the Remington eight fifty, eight seventy.
So the Remington eight seventy is a less lethal that is otherwise known as the bean bag, and that's the formal name.
Okay.
We have retired that as of last week.
So that 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 is the bean bag.
Correct. So those are no longer, um, in our fleet or available for deployment. They've been removed completely and replaced with the use of our forty-millimeter less launch, less lethal launcher, because those have been proven to be more practical, easier, as well as more cost-effective. Um, the Remington eight seventy bean bags just required a lot more maintenance. We had a lot of issues with our sights, and the rounds were a lot more expensive.
Just out of curiosity, what what round do you use in that forty-millimeter?
It's a bean bag sock round. So in essence, it's, the shell case is a, uh, oh, I'm sorry, did you ask for the forty-millimeter?
Your forty-millimeter.
I apologize, I was thinking about the bean bag. Um, it's a soft sponge round.
Okay, and that's enough?
Yes. Oh, yeah, they have a pretty, um, effective impact.
Okay.
And and that's, and so so that has got bears to turn around and
Oh, leave immediately, absolutely. And more importantly, though, uh, the pepperball is much more effective.
So so you've been using the pepperball and not the the forty-millimeter?
Correct.
Got it. So so I, um, okay, so So, so I, um, okay, so we're on questions, any other questions? All right, let's go ahead and thank you for your presentation. Let's open it up to, to uh public comment.
Mr. Mayor, there was no public comments. Uh Speaker Carr submitted four emails.
Great. So we'll close the public comment and bring it back to discussion. Um, any discussion in um the uh approving the, the annual reporting for AB eight, uh 481?
Seems all very responsible to me.
Yes.
It, it does to me, too. I'm, I'm, I'm very supportive of it. I, I would like to see a little bit more detail in the report of, of use. Um like, you know, um so we do have the number of bears that they're used on in, in a summary of the UASs. I think it's just helpful for us to know what, uh how we're, how we're using these assets. I think they're, they're very valuable and um it'd just be good to know.
So I'll move to approve this.
Great, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move uh on to our discussion items. So the first item, uh Analyst Carlson, is to introduce representative from the Department of Public Health. Oh, and, and um what I'd like to propose to the council before we bring that person up is we've got discussion item one and discussion item five, which are both related to the Department of Public Health. And so um I think it might be helpful to bring uh item one and five together. Um so then in case there's any questions for the Department of Public Health, we don't have to wait till the tail end of the meeting. Is there any objection to that?
No objection.
Okay, great.
So uh yeah, thank you. Um the, the city council received a letter uh at the end of their previous city council meeting. So we did reach out to members of the Department of County Public Health and uh City Attorney Giragosian was also involved with reaching out to them. I will go ahead and let him introduce our guests tonight and then I believe they will have the PowerPoint, their presentation, following some initial comments.
Great, thank you.
Uh council, today we have with us Dr. Muntu Davis, who is the Public Health Officer for the County of Los Angeles, as well as Joshua Bobrowski. Uh I believe he's an analyst at the office. I forget, I've, I apologize, I don't know your proper title.
Director of Government Affairs.
Right there, Director of Government Affairs, thank you so much. Um, and uh we're gonna have our Public Health Officer first talk generally about what LA County Public Health does in the county and then specifically for Sierra Madre. And he can answer some of the questions you have about lead testing and some of the issues that came up the last meeting. And then after that, um uh Director Bobrowski will have a presentation about specifically this issue about the LA County ordinance, ordinances and which ones are going to be enforceable within the city of Sierra Madre.
Good evening. So um I'm gonna let uh Mr. Bobrowski go through a little more detail in terms of the presentation, but I'm gonna give you a general overview of what I like to categorize and make it simple for people because I had to do this for my parents, uh what a public health department does and what we're focused in on. And I'll use the fire to, to go through a little bit of that. Um so in general, when you think about health departments, um they generally do four things. And that's typically to do surveillance, that's understanding the who, what, where, when and how and why of particular diseases or impacts to public health. Uh the second thing we do is to try to understand what is needed to control or stop whatever that is. And the third thing we do, and it doesn't go in this order, is uh both communicate. Um that oftentimes is to the press, to providers, to elected officials or to communities related to what's happening so that they know the surveillance and the disease control pieces. And then we also do uh things around resource coordination in order to do those first three. Um so that's working with partners, working with your offices, um you know, working with the community or, or other agencies in order to get those three things done. Um and so I'll talk a little bit about uh in terms of what we did around fire in terms of understanding environmental impacts. Um so as you know, um the fires were massive and unprecedented in terms of being an urban fire. And urban fires are usually pretty unique in the sense that what burns are structures that have chemicals or household chemicals inside the structures or cleaners and other things inside the structures uh that can cause um, you know, particular hazards that can pollute the environment, whether it's the soil, the air or the water. Um in general, the response was monitored by a number of different agencies, uh many of which are not part of our department. Um that's the South Coast Air Quality Management District, the Water Board, um as well as Public Works. We're looking at uh water uh and reservoirs uh as well. Uh we were paying attention to all of that in addition to uh understanding uh other things that may, may come from in, in, in the environment. Uh and one of the things in particular that came up with the fires, especially post-fire, was uh what's in the soil? What are the risks related to that? Uh many of you heard our messages in relationship to uh ash and fire debris uh potentially being hazardous based on what was there. Um you saw the process in terms of cleanup going to two phases. Uh one, to get out the household hazard materials, special trained folks who have to go in and do that. That's before anybody else comes in to remove anything else. That's in order to reduce the risk for either people going back to do uh searches of their properties for valuables, uh as well as for the workers who are gonna go back and remove other fire debris uh in that process. So it went through two phases. Um in that, um there was an order that was issued uh by our office, uh or by our department to make sure that fire debris was handled in a certain way so as not to pose more risk uh from the fire debris as it was getting picked up and disposed of in that process. Uh and that is still in place at this moment. Uh and uh as we continue to go through that, we work with Public Works uh to understand what's happening, um and the Army Corps, who's also doing removal uh of fire debris, um just to make sure that things are being adhered to in terms of how they're supposed to be adhered to, uh in terms of that order again, to reduce risk to those who are working, those in the nearby neighborhood or environment, as well as when it goes to get disposed of. Um, as we also thought about this, there, there were questions about people returning. So as you know, after the fires happened, even before cleanup happened, people were returning home to go search for valuables. Others were fortunate enough to have properties that weren't damaged, but surrounding properties were. And so there were lots of questions around, you know, what's in the soil, what's the risk? And generally, we put out guidance based on, general guidance based on what we understand are the potential risks, what instructions we give to people in terms of handling and trying to reduce their risk of exposure to those things. Uh as well as, uh we were fortunate enough to have some donations uh from private industry to provide personal protective equipment, uh which we were out in the field at checkpoints when people were going back uh in order to provide them with that equipment and to warn them of the things that they may run into uh as they went back to search and inspect their properties. Um as we get past all of that, um lots of the questions come up related to what's in the soil. Um we were fortunate enough, it's not normally something that we do. We were fortunate enough to be able to get resources to uh do what we call representative soil sampling. That means we can't test every property. Um so we want to take some samples from different types of property to get a sense of what may be there. So an example would be uh two different types of properties within the fire area. One property that is completely destroyed, another property that is intact. What are those, what are the soil, what does the soil look like for both of those? Just outside of the fire zone, what does the soil look like for those? And then a little bit further beyond, you know, that's a question as well. But we focused in on looking at uh within the fire zone, different types of properties that were in there, uh as well as looking just outside of it to understand what might be there as well. Now, the reason to look just outside of it is because, as you know, there were very strong winds. And so with the fire, things burn, ash goes up, debris goes up, gases go up, it gets blown. And then at some point, it's gonna fall, especially when it's a solid material like ash or soot. So that's what we focused in on doing, is trying to get a sense of, uh you know, doing some samples on different types of property to understand what it may look like. And that's what you see in our, I've seen in our uh public town halls, uh related to soil sampling. The first set, um you know, looking at uh what does it look like overall in terms of contaminants? That's both fire-specific contaminants, heavy metals, et cetera, uh as well as what did it look just outside of that? And uniquely, what we did find, based on the wind and based on the housing stock in the Eaton and Altadena fire area, uh is that there was a higher percentage of soil samples that had lead above the residential screening level, and that's eighty. Uh and that just means that there is a, a potential risk um and should maybe look further or do something in order to reduce the risk. And this is really a number that's set very conservatively in California uh for children and pregnant women, who are probably the most vulnerable to exposure, uh if exposed. And as a comparison, uh the EPA's level is two hundred. Uh and so California is very conservative in, in the way it looks at that. So as we looked at this, um we did start to see a pattern uh just outside of the Eaton fire area, just downwind south, uh that there were a significant number of samples that were much higher above this, or more samples, a percentage, uh was more higher above the screening level uh than was expected. And so as a result of that, um our board did uh designate uh three million dollars uh from a lead paint uh program uh specifically to do testing of soil so that others could do testing if they wanted to, composite samples of their soil uh in order to see what may be on their soil as well, just in terms of lead. Now that funding is very specific to lead, that's what it was designated for, that's the only thing it can be used for. Um we're very fortunate that the board allowed for this to happen because many were trying to figure out, you know, how can I sort of assess a little bit better in terms of my property? Uh and this is one thing that is, is offered, um and I did um share a flyer, which does have a QR code for people to be able to scan, look at the instructions and actually look at their property. There are a couple maps up to show which properties uh are eligible or targeted in terms of this testing. And then it gives instructions and we also have guidance in terms of, depending on what you find, here are some things that can be done, or here are some things to think about. Um so that's both the surveillance, a little bit of the disease control, uh some of the resources, and then communicating out. Um I do wanna note that on Thursday at six PM, we will have another uh town hall meeting, a virtual town hall. Um it'll be on our YouTube site, it's posted online already. Uh and so anybody can join and sort of hear the next, uh the next, in terms of what we have. Uh in that particular one, we'll talk a little bit more about, um we were offering and still are offering free lead testing, blood lead testing, uh for those who, who are concerned who feel like they may have been exposed or worried that they may have been, been exposed uh due to the fire or due to what potentially may be in the soil. Uh and um we'll talk about those results. Um I'll tell you up to this point, uh in May, the blood level tests, we've done maybe roughly around eight hundred. Uh and only about three of them were above uh the uh level in terms of, of, of lead that were we people worried about. And interestingly, those three were not in children, they were not in pregnant women, they were in men over seventy. Um each of them do, do get follow-up from us. Um we do have a lead prevention program. Um and so they did get direct uh follow-up with them to help provide some guidance. Um so we'll talk a little bit about the most recent levels. That's, that's probably earlier this month in terms of the blood lead testing, levels that I, of the results that I have. Uh they'll also talk about mos- mosquito control support. We recognize that a lot of properties had uh pools and no one's there. No one's managing the pool. Um it can create a ground for mosquitoes to uh lay eggs. Uh and so we've been working on uh with the mosquito control districts, uh vector control districts to try to figure out how to manage that. Uh and then we'll also talk about the soil testing program that I just mentioned, uh which is available uh now for people to uh collect um a composite sample, which means go to four different areas of your property. The recommendation, if you're worried about lead, if lead is under your tree, you never go there, you're not worried about being exposed. If lead is in your walkway, if it's in a play area, if it's an area that you have picnic, then those are the areas that you wanna, you wanna test, that you wanna pull soil from. Uh so grab four samples and there are specific instructions on how to do that. Put it in a bag, drop it off, and in about seven to ten days, results will get back to you. Uh so that's what we have, that's what we have currently available right now. Um aside from that, there are lots of documents that we've created, I've reviewed, our team have put together on numerous frequently asked questions, uh you know, related to the fire risk uh and recommendations or guidelines, just in terms of different things that people may run into. Uh anything from uh planting, uh using uh home gardens again, uh what to do with that, anything related to pools, what to do with that, um anything related to even thinking about rebuilding. Um one thing that I will say, um the representative sample is really just a representative sample. It's not detailed, even for the, the parcels that were sampled, it doesn't give character of those. If you were gonna do individual character of each property, it would be way more samples than were done uh in terms of what we were able to do uh with that funding. So uh you, you would have to do your own in order to figure out exactly what you, your, uh you may have um in terms of risk. But this is one thing that we were able to offer uh to give people a little bit of a semblance of what they can do in terms of checking uh their soil to see what may be there. Now, recommendations in terms of what to do with that, um we've had up for a long time. Um it's also on the same webpage uh that I've provided information for uh in terms of both uh what to do, how to look at that, as well as if you want to do uh blood lev- lev- lead level testing, um you know, how to do that, those instructions as well. Now, there are numerous government and academic agencies that are doing testing, various types of testing, whether it's water, whether it's indoor testing in terms of the air, uh et cetera. We've decided to and got all of them together to say, hey, look, once you get your results, instead of people going all over the place to search, to try to find these things, at least put a link on our website so that people can go to one place, figure out where stuff was, go see the results and the interpretation of those results. We've tried to work with each entity that is doing testing, whatever testing they're doing, to try to make it as much layperson friendly as possible, but we are talking about scientists and professionals. Uh so we, we try to work with them on that. But in general, uh a lot of the results of a lot of the entities that are doing testing, whatever type of testing they're doing, is available on our website as a central place. Uh it's on our uh post, um post-fire assessment plan, uh link in terms, in terms of our wildfire recovery page. Um so with that, I'll stop and see if there are any questions related to um the soil sampling or, or other environmental questions. And then I'll let Joshua go through a little more detail, nuts and bones, in terms of, of our department and what we do.
Great. Questions?
Thank you, uh very, very detailed. Uh you've done this before, I think.
Few times.
Um no notes, um I noticed that. Uh so we had a resident that was, was here in Chambers earlier, I don't know if he's still here, um he is still here, yeah. So he, um he, he came to our last council meeting and um I, I believe his property, maybe some others, they had somebody come in and I think he called it ghost swipes. So my, my house is from nineteen twenty-four, if you go to my, any of my window sills and you check for lead, you're gonna find lead, high levels of lead. Uh there's a lot of house, old houses here in Sierra Madre. Um but um from what I understand, he indicated that they were doing random swipes like on coffee tables and things around inside. And I think the, the big concern is the, soil is obviously a concern, but the, the hazards inside homes. And I think you spoke to that a little bit on some of these, you're not doing it as, as the public agency, but you have uh links to websites um on your website. So could you expand on what the potential health risks are and what kind of resources there are for our residents?
Yeah, so you know, the, the hardest thing with indoor assessments is really, uh the general advice that we give is what you run into when you first go back, sort of gives you an idea of what may be there. Um so typically, when we're talking about smoke damage, it's gonna be ash, soot, which is that fine black uh powder, uh you know, uh that you get from combustion. Um and also potentially odors, lingering odors or smells, um as well as any other chemical residue from something that may have burned. Now, properties are very different, much, unfortunately, much like the, the fires where you have things that were skipped. It's the same thing with the soil that we saw, some things are skipped. Um and it doesn't make sense in terms of why this and not that when it's right next to it or it's surrounded by all of these other things. It's the same thing um that we uh seem to understand in terms of with indoor uh smoke damage. Depends on your property, whether windows and doors were open, whether you've got leaks or cracks or gaps, um you know, what the airflow is typically like in your house. Uh and so properties can be very different uh in that regard. In general, um if it's not really light, then you may need to have a professional who understands what they're looking for and how to look, look at it and how to assess it, uh to really do that assessment and figure out what testing, if any, is needed, what recommendations in terms of cleanup are needed as well. Uh but generally, um you know, we have provided advice on sort of how to go in and do that assessment. Um you know, how to think about, to get a person who maybe have more expertise in terms of doing that assessment or making recommendations, which may be very specific for your property, uh and your location as well. Um and so those are the things that we put and we have available on there, um in terms of that.
And, and I think th- they also indicated that there was a, you know, subpopulation of them that had respiratory, lingering respiratory issues is, and that could be, you know, I'm no expert, that could be just the flu or what, a coughs or whatever, but it could also, could also be contaminant, so.
It could be. So, yeah, let me go back to, I didn't answer your other question. So in terms of the risks, there, there are some things, like with heavy metals in general, it's more of a long-term risk. Heavy metals like lead will accumulate in the body over time after repeated and repeated and repeated exposure. Um so those may be sort of delayed effects. And typically, we worry about that with children. Um it can cause learning uh difficulties or slowness and, and that. Um you know, change in behavior, other things of that nature, uh which is typically why there's a, a tremendous focus in terms of kids, especially because kids, especially um under six and usually uh under three, you know, may be on the ground, you know, playing in dirt, et cetera, putting stuff in their mouths. Um and so that's uh, you know, something that we might expect to see, at least with children and that. But those, that's usually what happens with the heavy metals. Uh for other things, they're usually um ear- For other things, there are usually ear, nose and throat irritants, meaning, you know, sort of like allergies, but sometimes worsening of a cough, especially if you have an underlying health condition, a heart condition. So if it impacts your breathing, you're not getting a lot of oxygen in, it's going to feel harder to breathe and harder to work. And that could be a temporary irritation, just based on what you're exposed to. For some, it may be that they're, especially after the fire with the ash and the smoke in the air, irritated lots of people, you know, ear, nose and throat, runny nose, cough, et cetera, watery eyes as well. In general, it could be also depending on how well cleanup was done, or if there are some things that may not have been discovered, you know, that are, were contaminated inside the home, that it could be some lingering effects related to that as well. And again, sometimes that's where, you know, expertise is needed to come in and sort of look at and think about, you know, did you actually check in the closet in that back corner? Is there something there? Is the HVAC system, did that get heavily impacted? Does that need to be cleaned out? You know, and so you do need some expertise in order to figure that out. But those are generally some of the symptoms that we would expect to see more immediately. Some of them are things that could cause cancer, and that's much later on, harder to sort of figure out if it's exactly related to that. But that's a longer-term effect, but usually the shorter-term effects are mostly ear, nose and throat irritation as well as potentially some difficulty breathing depending on underlying health.
Is there a way to specifically identify what is carcinogenic, or what kind of carcinogens are potentially in the house versus? Because I'm hearing about lead and those things, because those tend to be, like lead and mercury, those heavy metals tend to be like a buildup and a long-term thing.
Yeah.
But as far as carcinogens, is there like a list of what to check for, or? Probably all over the place, right?
Yeah, there are so many different things to consider. I mean, I think if you look at a lot of the lead testing we did, one of the big things that comes up as a cancer causer is dioxins, that are typically a byproduct of a fire. And that's something that was tested in terms of the soil, the testing that we did. PHs, polyaromatic hydrocarbons are another one that sort of show up as well. Among other things as well in that, so.
Thank you. So you mentioned lead, and you've done a great job talking about that. But how about, and you mentioned kind of generally some of the other heavy metals. But, you know, I've heard talk about arsenic in some of the media reports. There's also concerns around cadmium, chromium, vanadium. How, you know, is that the similar type of guidance as you would have with the cancer causing? At some point, like, how do you, how do you do like that full assessment? And is there guidance on your website about different categories and what to look for? Because you're focusing a lot on lead, but I've heard arsenic, I don't know about the others.
I'll talk about those, yeah.
We've heard chrome six has been a big issue historically.
Yeah. So what was interesting is with the Eaton fire, predominantly it was lead. Of course, there are a few of the other things in, you know, different areas, not as frequent in that. When we looked at the Palisades fire, it was very different. Not so much lead, maybe a hotspot of arsenic up here, maybe cadmium down here, which we don't believe is related to the fire, which could be something that was already there. But it didn't quite fit the pattern unless there was something more specific in that area that was really heavy in cadmium or arsenic. Arsenic can be, is higher here in Los Angeles County regardless. But that's how we sort of looked at those patterns, to sort of see. And again, it was a bit of a surprise for us to see, you know, the higher percentage of samples of lead, soil samples being above the lead screening level south of the fire. That was unusual, but it was a pretty consistent pattern in terms of looking at that swath of land just below. So that's how we think about those things. You know, we do have some requests to try to get some assistance to try to better understand those hotspots, you know, related to like arsenic and cadmium, I believe was the other one in Palisades. But it's something that we don't quite know, but we don't necessarily think it was related to the fire based on the pattern that we saw in terms of its detection.
So when you did your initial assessment, you kind of did a full, the EP has certain standard methods for these different contaminants. Did you do the full screen to get an idea of what to narrow in on? Or did you, you know, like how did you narrow in on lead versus some of the other ones?
So wasn't us per se, we had an expert who thought about that, who's done this for a long time, sort of thinking about post-fire. We also looked at what was done in Lahaina and Hawaii with their fire as well. We actually pulled from their model a bit in terms of pulling all of the results into one website for people to be able to see. But most of those things are some of the more common contaminants that you might see post-fire. And so that's how it was narrowed down by our expert in terms of thinking about it.
Okay. Other questions? Yeah.
This has been amazing, so thank you for being here and thank you for sharing your knowledge. Obviously, when events like this occur, you know, people's awareness of these contaminants, you know, is heightened, right? You hear news reports, but you also just sort of know that, you know, a disaster like this can create, you know, create contaminants, distribute contaminants, what it may be. What I guess I haven't seen as much, and maybe in your resources it touches on this, is that sometimes I think people then ignore the fact that, I mean, and I thought it's a good thing, but that there are heightened levels of many of these things that we've been living with for a long time has nothing to do with the fire. So I wonder how you deal with this notion that like, this thing happens, this heightened awareness, people are very concerned about lead, for example, and they'd probably never thought about much about lead before that. And having that sort of calibration of understanding what the results mean as compared to what the level of risk was, you know, last November.
Well, unfortunately, lead and lead prevention has been a program that we've had for a long time. And so there's a lot of work that gets done already in the community, talking about other sources of lead. We had XIDE Battery Factory was one area that we, you know, had that, knowing that it's an industry that was a source related to that. So we do talk about, and even in these testing results, we talk about, you know, potentially other sources. Like there were lots of questions about, well, why did, why did your, would you guys stop? Where you stopped in terms of the testing below the Eaton fire? Well, if we push further in, we're going to get to the freeway, and that's going to be some other contaminants, in terms of thinking about other sources of the same things that we're looking for. So we didn't go that far down, because there would be a mix, and it would be not necessarily a clear, a clear, a clear indication that it was related to the fire. So we try to incorporate that messaging about other sources potentially. But when we get down to it, what we really want people to understand is how to reduce your risk. No matter what the source is, no matter where it came from, here are the things to do in order to reduce your potential exposure, you know, to that. Which is why even before anybody does any testing, we've already put out some guidance in terms of what you can do to remediate your soil or to reduce your risk or exposure from soil. What you can do if you want to restart your garden. What can you do if you want to, you know, make sure that your property, in terms of the areas that you're on, in terms of where there's bare soil, what can you do to reduce your risk there as well?
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, do you know if there was, maybe not within the scope of your department, but any modeling done to have an understanding of what was burning? And then how the wind patterns could have carried from either brush and debris or lead-based paint in Altadena, right? So was there modeling done to maybe capture where that would land?
Well, during the time that the fire was happening, AQMD had, in terms of their air monitors, they also monitored wind. So they had an idea of which way things were going, and that's why we know that lead being carried in the air was something that they detected. So putting that together with what we saw in terms of the soil samples, just two and two, it's like, yes, the wind was blowing that way. Yes, we know that there was lead flying, you know, in that regard. They've had some small spikes and other things, but it wasn't as extensive as what we saw with lead.
So would there be a resource for like our residents or residents of any of the burn areas to know specifically what may have been carried potentially to their area?
Yes. So if you look at, so if you look at our website under, I think it's under air monitoring, AQMD, they do have a wildfire page that shows all of the things that they sampled. And I will say that they had both their standard monitors, they put in some temporary monitors, they also had mobile monitors, and each of them do something a little bit different. So you can see the slew of things that they measured and what they detected, you know, as they did their sampling, both during the fire and after the fire as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Great. You have another presentation here, let's go ahead and take that.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Again, Joshua Bobrowski, Director of Government Affairs for Public Health. Delighted that Dr. Davis was here, as he is our health officer and really is our subject matter expert when it comes to the services of the health officer and the public health department. But I'm going to drill down a little bit more into the public health services, health officer services agreements that we have with the cities, and then talk a little bit more. I think the request was to share with you some recently enacted, last few years, ordinances approved by the Board of Supervisors for further consideration. Next slide, please. First, I just want to thank the council, as I know that you have already approved and signed the health officer services agreement with the county. So just some background, you know, state law allows cities to contract with counties for health officer services. Very few cities in California, only Long Beach, Pasadena and Berkeley, have their own separate municipal public health departments. And our agreements that we had, we have eighty-five agreements for health officer services with eighty-five cities, many cases dated back to the nineteen sixties. They had many outdated references to statute, some had outdated references to the names of cities. So one of the things we discovered, you know, through the course of the COVID pandemic, is that not everyone was familiar with what are the authorities of the health officer with public health departments. And so we wanted to undergo this exercise of modernizing these agreements, getting a better understanding, working with our cities. We piloted the initiative with cities and then went out to cities and said, you know, this is the template agreement that we're looking to sign and execute with the cities. That was eventually approved by the Board of Supervisors, and then we've come back to the cities to execute those agreements. So I'll talk a little bit more about the services that are provided under that. Next slide, please. So again, these agreements allow us to enforce state law and Title XI of the county's municipal code on public health. Importantly, these services are provided at no cost to cities for the most part. Next slide. There are numerous state mandated public health duties, functions and services based on state law as well as state regulations. So these include birth and death certificates, communicable disease control, maternal and child health services, environmental health and sanitation, health education, laboratory, public health nursing services, and the other services listed here. We do provide other services that are not covered under this agreement, but are covered under other statutory or contractual obligations with the state, such as substance abuse treatment services that we contract out for with community-based providers and health facilities inspections, for example. Next slide. So what are some of the authorities for? The health officer, local health officers have discretionary authority to take necessary and advisable measures to protect the public's health. California law requires that each county appoint a health officer who must be a physician. However, that health officer can be appointed, but is not required to be the local health department director. California law also grants local health officers with broad authority to take action to prevent disease. For example, the health officer may declare a local health emergency when necessary, which can then be extended by the local governing body, in this case, the LA County Board of Supervisors. The health officer has authority to issue orders, including orders for isolation and quarantine, and observes and enforces county and state public health laws and regulations to protect and promote the health and wellness of the county residents. So with that, I'll move on to talking about, again, some of the ordinances that have been approved in recent years. With the execution of these newer agreements, we didn't want to assume that cities automatically wanted the county to enforce some of these more recently adopted ordinances that were approved by the Board of Supervisors. So that's why we're coming out to you and suggesting these are additional ones that you may want to consider. So I'll talk briefly about these. In 2020, I'll start off on the massage establishment inspections. Next slide, please. In 2020, the Board of Supervisors approved new requirements for massage establishments to ensure public health protection. They're required to obtain a business license and a public health permit. They're inspected once a year for compliance and to ensure the health and safety of both employees as well as patrons to minimize the spread of disease. The annual public health permit fee is $409 and requires a site evaluation. So this is one ordinance that the county adopted and is available for your city to consider. Again, if you incorporate these into your municipal code, LA County Public Health would then be able to enforce, again, at no additional cost.
Do you mind if I ask questions as you go, or do you want us to hold this to the end?
You can ask questions as you go. I also want to share that I'm not the expert in all of these ordinances. So if there are questions that I can't answer, we'll come back to you with additional information in the future.
On that last point, in terms of the massage establishment inspections, they are specific to health code-related items and not sort of the broader legal challenges that we can have with massage parlors? Or is it sort of, you know, I mean, I'll just be honest, we've had, you know, trafficking concerns with massage organizations in our city. Is that, obviously that wouldn't necessarily be covered by a health inspection, but certainly I assume that indicia of that kind of behavior could be part of what's discovered in the inspections?
These, very good question, and these are all issues that the Board obviously grappled with as well. The public health inspection is primarily focused on the public health aspects, but that does incorporate sort of looking at indicia for human trafficking. It doesn't sort of specifically address that, but you know, the goal is to then be able to work with additional partners to look at those kinds of issues. And obviously, it has to be kind of a multi-disciplinary kind of approach.
I mean, there's one thing that does come up, and I think we've had to figure out how this works, is typically as health department employees, we're mandated reporters. So if it appears that there is something happening for someone who's underage or something like that, then we are required to report that. Typically, it might be to law enforcement in order to do a follow-up. So there are some things, if we see something that's odd, it's not something we're looking for, but if we see something that we're supposed to report on, we would need to do that.
Thank you very much.
And, you know, the issue of human trafficking is one that the board has, you know, been working at addressing as well, and has multiple kind of different programs and initiatives to try to address those issues as well.
And just to kind of follow up with what we're going over here. So we approve the new contract, I think our old contract was in the fifties, right? So a new contract to provide services. And what you're giving here are examples of, if we choose to put something into our ordinance, you already have the authority, but if it's now one of our laws, then you can come enforce it. That's part of the services agreement.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying.
It's not already, this wasn't already in the service agreement, but the service agreement gives you the ability to do these things, but we can then do these on our own to then have you come in and enforce.
Correct. And, you know, typically, the county's authority is to enact legislation in unincorporated areas. But if the cities then incorporate those ordinances into your municipal code, then we do have the authority to enforce in your jurisdiction.
Thank you.
So next slide, this one on Roxy Swim Safe Ordinance. This is a swimming pool safety ordinance that was adopted in 2022. The Board of Supervisors approved the Roxy Swim Safe Ordinance in honor of six-year-old Roxy Forbes, who sadly drowned at the swimming pool of a children's summer day camp in Los Angeles County. So again, as you had pointed out, this new ordinance applies to the county unincorporated areas and any city that adopts it into their ordinance. So the following new requirements went into effect in 2023. The ordinance expands lifeguard requirements to additional public and private swimming pools and public swimming areas, including those at children's camps and schools. It requires having an aquatic safety plan for public swimming pools which require lifeguard services, and requires that owners or operators of any public pool or public swimming area must immediately notify public health in the event of a fatal or non-fatal drowning incident. Because we had, you know, identified that there was a gap in that. Public health wasn't always aware of when there were drowning situations to then be able to follow up as needed to ensure the health and safety of that pool and that, you know, that proper safety measures are being taken. So that's additional ordinance for consideration. Next slide. Kind of in a related vein, the Board of Supervisors adopted the Elena Matias Children's Camp Safety Ordinance that it became effective in 2023. It was named after Roxy's mother, who sadly also passed away of different circumstances, but was a tireless advocate for children's camp safety. So this new ordinance established health and safety standards for children's camps located in the unincorporated- in the unincorporated areas of the county, and again, any cities that adopt it into their ordinance. The ordinance establishes counselor-to-camper ratios, background and training requirements for camp counselors and directors, and operational instructional, structural minimum standards. It also requires each camp location to have written operating procedures and plans to address medical and other emergencies, transportation needs, and oversight of swimming and other specialized recreational activities. It defines children's camps, children's camps as distinct from organized camps, which are already defined in state law. For those that operate less than four weeks in a twelve-month period, they're required to register with the Department of Public Health. For those that operate more than four weeks in a year, they must obtain a permit and be subject to a site evaluation for compliance with minimum standards. The Environmental Health Division of Public Health inspects camps to ensure that code requirements are met. These include a wide variety of areas, including building standards, fire regulations, water supply, food safety, facilities, housing, refuse vector, control issues, health supervision, general sanitation, and safety and maintenance.
And I probably could have done my homework, but could you just give me a, I'm sure there's a definition of what a camp is, and can you just give me like the loose definition of a camp? So I can understand, like, if the Y has a kid for two hours, is that a camp or, or not?
And believe it or not, that actually was the subject of much conversation, you know, for the development of that ordinance and working with subject matter experts and the industry. And so there is a definition of children's camp in the ordinance itself. Any camp operating in unincorporated areas of the county is classified as a children's camp if the site has programs and facilities attended by five or more children ages three to seventeen. And the primary purpose is providing group experience with social, spiritual, educational or recreational objectives. And the site operates for over three hours per day for at least five days during any twelve-month period. So it tried to exclude kind of, you know, just the informal overnight, but was really, you know, of longer duration.
So if there was like a, a one-week-long vacation Bible school at one of our churches in town, that would be a children's camp?
As long as it's at least five days, five days or more during any twelve-month period.
Thank you.
And again, for, for basic ones, they might just have to register and others would be required to have a permit and it's, the fees are established based on kind of the size of the children's camp, like how many children attend. And then also if there are any kind of specialized recreational activities like a ropes course that might require, you know, additional oversight.
And does it require an inspection or is it just a possibility of inspection?
It does require a site evaluation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next slide. So there are several additional ones, not all, which may pertain to jurisdiction. We recently enacted a ordinance on medical debt data collection to require hospitals to report on their medical debt collection to ensure we're getting more information about those missed opportunities for people to avail themselves of financial assistance. But again, that applies to jurisdictions that have a general healthcare hospital in their jurisdiction. We also adopted an anti-retaliation ordinance, and this came up in the context of COVID when there was reporting of health officer violations for orders under Title XI or under the health officer's orders to ensure that workers or others who reported violations would not be subject to retaliation. So again, should you decide to adopt that, we would be able to ensure that workers would be able to be protected from anti-retaliation as well for reporting any violations of sanitary issues. And then the tobacco ordinance, next slide for that. I'm sorry, actually, go back one. In 2019, the board of supervisors approved an ordinance creating restrictions on retail sales of tobacco products and a new business license requirement in unincorporated LA County. The law does not apply to personal possession or use of tobacco products. So the inspection program is designed to ensure that all permitted tobacco retailers adhere to the following guidelines, that they have the necessary state and local licenses or permits, that the facilities follow age-of-sale signage guidelines, that there is no sale or possession with the intent to sale, sell any flavored tobacco products, which is now also banned by state law. It has limitations on cigarettes, little cigars or cigareos being sold in sealed packages with no less than twenty units. There's no self-service tobacco displays, and there's no smoking in an enclosed space at a facility. So again, this is trying to ensure that there's also not underage sales and has compliance checks both by public health or any local law enforcement as well. And then finally, our cannabis ordinance is pertinent to cities that allow commercial cannabis activities, which I don't believe your jurisdiction does. But again, this would be for inspection of facilities and jurisdictions that do allow for commercial activities related to cannabis where we would then go out and inspect those facilities. So I'll stop there and happy to take any questions on these or else I said, get back to you with additional information.
Any other questions from council members?
Mayor, may I sum up with potential options that the city council may consider with respect to this item?
Should, can we go through the public comment first and then we make that as part of the discussion? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So if there are no more questions from the council, we'll go ahead and open up for a public comment. Madam Kirk, do we have any comments for, any comment cards?
Mr. Mayor, no speaker cards were submitted.
So if you, if you've got a comment card.
I can see questions on the record.
Could you, could you fill out a comment card when you're done? So we, so we've got it for the record because we want to make sure we capture that. So please.
Sorry, I just, it was quite a day, sorry about that. I'm a 623 Woodland here in Sierra Madre, you guys know that already, been here thirty years. I just had a couple of questions for Dr. Davis.
Can you, can you speak, can you speak into the mic?
I have been literally attacked by the periodic cable at my house and especially the night of the fires, and it's been absolute hell, and we didn't really know it till about three months, three months into it. So there were people running around, remediation people, all kinds of crazy people running with boxes and hair on fire, let's say. But basically, our, our lead tests, even after three months of that, were sixty times horizontal surface danger level inside. Copper, I brought my glasses for a reason. Copper, seventeen-hundred times danger level, zinc, zinc, six, sorry, thirteen-hundred times danger level, vanadium, twenty-five times danger level, arsenic, twenty-two times danger level, nickel, cadmium, arsenic, oh, and, antimony, barium, excuse me. And we remodeled our home in 2009, got rid of all the metals. So it's not like a long-term thing, and I know you guys said that in Maui too because you got a lot of friends there. But, and then your map, it says that you go all the way down to the two, sorry, to the two-ten, and your map stops at the bottom of the mountain, jumps over everybody that got all the fire and the winds, and covers the city, and then goes down to the two-ten. Any, any address that you try to pop in to get a free test, because I spent $5,000 on this test, so I was hoping for a free soil test, and just nothing, there's no way I can get a test. So there's a lot of, unfortunately, I'm not trying to challenge you guys, I'm just saying from my frustration point of view, this didn't really help me tonight because it's like your, there's so many holes in what you said, and it's, no offense whatsoever, but I just, you know, I'm, I'm stuck and I've had, I had the best tester out there, the best one, Blue Sky Consulting, and it's like Pat Moffett is like the guy that you all go to. And I was just hoping I would hear something different, I guess, is my point. So and I, I'm not attacking you, I swear, I'm just coming from a frustrated person sitting over in that chair, who is obviously very nervous standing up here. But it's just, I, I'm hoping I can talk to you even more, but I just want to get this on the record, as in if anybody's going on that map to check on anybody in the, in my canyon or anywhere else that we live, you're not going to get a free test. It just doesn't, it just isn't there. And I sent you guys an email on Friday that's going, hey, this just doesn't work. You know, none of us are getting a free test apparently. So you have some work to do, unfortunately, or someone does. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other public comments?
No, no speaker cards submitted, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let's bring it back, let's close the public comment and bring it back for discussion. Attorney Gargosian, you had a suggestion, it sounds like you might be able to wrap up discussion items one and five together here.
Yeah, so, so these, these two items got merged during this conversation. They were, agendas as two separate items, so I'm only going to speak to the, the second item, which was formerly number five. I think, I think the city council has probably five different options available. If the city council wants to just defer to the county public health department and not consider this, these different ordinances in the future, you can probably direct the city attorney's office to draft an ordinance that incorporates all of the county's ordinances from today and as amended in the future. If the city council wants to adopt what they've heard so far, but have, but consider ordinances that are adopted by the county in the future, you can direct me to do that. And so you can adopt everything you're today, and then as they are adopted in the future, I can bring them before you for consideration. The staff report has recommendations for, for the ones that staff thinks are the most relevant to the city. You can limit your adoption to those. Or if you want to study them in further detail, we could always continue this item and give the city council an opportunity or, or an ad hoc of the city council an opportunity to consider these in further detail or reject them all out entirely and leave it up to city staff. Currently, city staff does regulate a lot of these. We have ordinances on the books for many of them, including tobacco retailing, massage establishments, so we have our own regulatory scheme. This would just add another layer to that. Would add a public, public health layer to our existing business license slash administrative procedure we already have.
So the, the regulations we have right now is more on issuing of permits, of business permits and over general oversight, like, how do we know there isn't a conflict between the, the public health codes and our ordinances?
Well, when you say conflict, I don't think there's so much of conflict as there is in, there's a definite overlap. The tobacco retailing, for example, doesn't look that different than what we have on the books. The massage establishment ordinance they have, it doesn't look that different than what we have on the books. I didn't see any conflicts, again, I did a pretty cursory review of both of them because I didn't have direction from council as to how to proceed. But it doesn't like there's a conflict, but there's definitely overlap. So we'd be enforcing some of the same standards.
So, so is one of the options us to drop our standards and adopt, and adopt them and they can cover, okay. All right. Can I, can I? Yeah, please.
Okay. So I thought this discussion, I was going to focus on the issues that regarding Eaton Canyon Fire. And, because we have a gentleman here who's expressed concern, I thought maybe we could prioritize that first.
Okay.
Because he's been waiting here all night, and then maybe we could do this, the other issue, maybe, would that be all right?
I think that's a really good suggestion. So let's, let's start there and, so is there any discussion on that item? We, we, we received a, a presentation for public health about their, their resources and information on the Eaton fire, and there's places on, on the website.
So this was for information then, right? Okay, so a receiving file basically for us and information for our citizens.
Yes.
Correct? So I wasn't here in the last meeting, and so is this, this was dealt with at the last meeting?
This was brought up at the last meeting.
Yeah, so on the. What were we requested to do at the last meeting? Do you recall?
Well, we have a letter from the residents in the back of the agenda report.
I remember that, I saw that.
And so any requests were in that, but I think they're, they're just looking for guidance and help. That's my understanding from, from the residents.
Okay.
And so we thought we'd bring the, thankfully, the authority came and gave the knowledge that.
So we don't want to serve as intermediary, you would, you'd go to, straight to the county then? Is that what you're saying? I'm not sure.
I think based on what we're hearing, I think that's, because, because we're not trained, we don't know, you know, he, he, like he said, he's being attacked by the, the periodic cable, he's got the information on it. I, I'm not sure the role that the council plays in this.
Yeah, I'm, we were just looking for advice and help, not literally to come down and shovel it out, just more like, just if you guys had some contacts or someone we could start working, you know, talking to just to kind of help out, just because if I have those kinds of levels in my house and I'm in the middle of the canyon, how is it that no one else has the same levels, I'm sorry, similar levels, let alone in the soil? So we were just trying to figure out if you guys had any ideas. And so it wasn't a like, you know, help us or we're going to be a bad issue, it was just more like, help us because we're frustrated, so.
I was hearing that.
Okay.
I, I now understand, the, the official from the county did address that, the disparities and the somewhat randomness of some of these things. Did that have any impact on your thinking on this?
Sure, absolutely. Unfortunately, not much, just because we kind of live on top of each other in the canyon. And so, and so I'm talking about the canyon, but I'm also talking about all the way down to Grandview because that's where you are not going to get any testing as well.
Right.
There's just, they're advertising that you're going to click on the map and get some tests, there's no tests coming unless you.
Are you aware of others who've had high-level or good-quality private testing done like you have?
No, I'm trying to get that done, but I mean, obviously, no one's going to pay what I paid, so, and then the guy said he'll come down in price, but he's, you know, he's like the best guy out there and he wants to retire.
Right.
Wrong time, wrong time to retire. But, so that's why I was hoping we would be able to start with this, is just to kind of get it going, because I sure like to spearhead it, but, and then my neighbor Caroline as well, who was with me that one night, so.
And the insurance, and there's no insurance relief, and I mean, I know.
Oh, they're, they're working on it, I mean, they're, you know, of course, they're playing games, but we're, we're, we're moving in the right direction, it's just a very slow process, so. But my, I mean, you didn't ask this, but it's like, my wife has cancer, my dogs are sick from it, and it's been officiated, their, their forty thousand dollar vet bills just from the smoke and the whatever's metals. There's just a lot going on, and it's just like, I'd just like to get this, my house put back together and, and, you know, I mean, we didn't, it didn't burn down, but everybody says that they wish that, you know, the ones that have gone through what we've gone through or similar have wished that it would have burned down because it would have been easier. So in some ways, I mean, that's kind of rude, but I mean, that's just, I don't know, that's just what I'm told, so.
So, City Manager Reno, so are we going to have another update? Do we have a periodic update on progress around the Eaton Canyon and rebuilding efforts? I mean, it seems like there's, there's some thread here to potentially pull through. I know there's different components, so I'm trying to think through, is this a separate item that we should be discussing, or is it something that we should be doing a, an Eaton update on a periodic basis?
Mayor, thank you for the question. So staff is working on an update, but the update is more the impacts to the city. There are some things that I think that we could do to partner with LA County to bring resources to our residents, maybe links on our website, and we can engage with the health department to see what we can do there. If the council directs staff, we can come back with, with updates on what we've done at a, at a future meeting.
I, I think, what does the council feel about this? I, I don't want to be the, the one sole person driving it, but I think that that type of update, knowing what the city is doing in ways also making available to residents and getting updates on kind of, you know, giving a chance for the public to, to give feedback on it, seems like a good direction, but I'm open to other ideas.
I believe so.
Yeah, it means a public, public health and public safety issue. And, you know, I think all of us put that at the top of our list, so, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So Councilmember Goss, do you feel that that has covered the Eaton portion of things?
I think so, yes.
Great.
Thank you for humoring me.
No, no, thank you for breaking up, I think that was a really great suggestion. So then, then if we go on to the, the, the public health ordinances, let me just throw something out to, to start the discussion and see if this, this works as a starting point. The staff report recommended four different, four, yeah, four different ordinances to be considered. And I, I, I'm wondering if our guidance should be for the city attorney to look at those four ordinances and to figure out how to incorporate them into, into our code to the extent possible that we can leverage the expert resources of the county and minimize the resources of the city.
Mayor, when you say incorporate them into our code, it's my understanding that the county will not be enforcing ordinances that aren't adopted by the county, so it's not like we can adopt it into our code? Do you mean adopt their ordinance into our code?
Adopt.
Or amend our existing ordinance?
I was going to say amend our ordinances to be consistent with our code, or just make so it, it's, I want to make sure it's, it's clear who does what. You, you, what I heard from you is that there's overlapping authorities in this. And, and my thought is, is that I'm not sure it makes sense to have the overlapping authorities. So the analysis would be, are there things in there that we should be doing? And are there things, are there any holes in what the county's doing that's important to us, right? And to me, it's just, it's just seeing is, if, if we can, if we can just say we retire our codes and adopt theirs and we get their services, so that, that's where my mind is going. I don't, I don't know if I'm completely clear. Is, is it, other questions from others on?
Well, I guess, to me, the overlap, and maybe this is what you were getting at, City Attorney Gargosian, we don't do any public health, like, we don't, we don't have the authority to be any public health, you know, we have no public health authority, let me put it that way. So we're not doing any of this in terms So we're not doing any of this in terms of a public health, you know, overlay. Now, I think what you're talking about in terms of like overlapping or, you know, potential conflict, is that we do regulate some of the same. Subject matter, not from a public health perspective, but from, you know, like we're talking about the massage facilities, like from a safety. You know, uh, not violating law, that, you know, that sort of that, that aspect of it, the, the sort of the potential criminality aspects of it. So I think, I think maybe to put a finer point on what you're saying is that. If we were to replace, for example, the mista- massage establishment ordinance in our code. Would we be giving up? The non-public health aspects of enforcement that might be important to us, you know, for the sex trafficking, for example. You know, like, like, that, to the extent that that is not a public health issue, and we wanna make sure that we can still enforce those issues. You know, I would not be in favor of just cutting and paste.
Yeah, their, their ordinance is, is a holistic ordinance, so you have to remember, they're also providing, they're also regulating the unincorporated areas. So they're not just doing public health. It's, it's a, it's an ordinance that covers everything related to massage establishments. And there's a public health component to it. Ours doesn't have the public health component. It just has everything else.
So, so you're.
And it's all based on state law, so we're, that's why it's, it's similar language.
So your feeling is, is if we were to get rid of our massage ordinance, that the county public health would cover everything that our massage ordinance covers?
Yes, um, yes, and I don't, I don't think. I'm not sure there's a problem now with having overlap, overlapping jurisdiction. It hasn't come up. Like, there's overlapping jurisdiction in the past with other ordinance as well. And this overlapping jurisdiction issue hasn't come up yet. Our code enforcement and, uh, public health have enforced things in the past and they've worked side by side and there hasn't really been an issue. Um, so.
So maybe, so maybe then what it is, 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 is we, we don't touch our code and we just adopt the counties. Thoughts?
Don't touch our codes. If we adopt the counties, we would have to override ours. We can't have two different massage.
Wh- what I'm hearing is, is that, that, well. What I'm hearing is they don't con- conflict.
But I don't, I mean, but if they cover the same ground, I don't know that we would want two different ordinances that cover the same thing.
So, so one would be enforced by public health and we wouldn't enforce the public health provisions. Under the, cause, under the, under chapter eleven of our code. And one would cover the business license regulation aspect of which would be enforced by us. That's how it wouldn't conflict.
I mean, cause there's things here like hours of operations. Um, if you're selling tobacco, a business license from the county is required. Things like that are within this ordinance and that doesn't really translate well.
So, so what if we then say, so, let, let, let's, let's break this down a little bit. First, of the ordinances that are proposed by the county, are there, uh, do we agree on the four? That, that staff has proposed for us to adopt? Are there any ones that we want to, to include? I don't think we need to include cannabis. Um, I don't know that we need to include the medical debt, but, cause it's, cause it's hospital related. Are, are the four that have been recommended, are we comfortable with those four?
Well, yeah, I, I would, I would like to have conversations with, with our tenant at the Y regarding what their policies are. And what, how they're, you know, what they're looking at.
With respect to the pools or with respect to the camps?
Pools and camps. Yeah, but camps isn't one of the four.
I know, I know, but I mean, just as I'm like, the, the part of the question was, are there any of the others that you would include in the four?
And should, should we include camps? That's a really good question.
And what, what is the extra service in tobacco retailing? Uh, there's, there's gonna be an extra licensing fee, right, to then, just for tobacco specifically. But I'm, I don't know what the.
So, so, I, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to parse the, the two parts out. So, so I think we agree, we wanna look at tobacco. So, so if you, so. Do we wanna include children's camps in, in the ones to?
Oh, you're asking, what, do we wanna add anything?
I just, I just wanna look at scope for a second. And I think, I, I, to me, I think that having the four and adding children's camps makes, makes the most sense to me.
I think we would need to se- personally, I think we would need to separately agendize children's camps, because I think we need to pu- we needed to. More specifically publicize that to the community, to hear from the community, because to, um, council member Garcia's point. There are lots of organizations that have, you know, periodic holiday and summer camps. That I'm not sure are set up or would probably have to cancel for, for cost purposes, things like. Vacation bar- Bible school or, you know, childcare organization, you know, for that holiday period. Some, some of our local organizations have like a thing where you can drop your kid off, because you have to work and your kids aren't in school. I, I don't know.
Okay, it's a really good point.
Yeah, and I, and I understand, you know, the reasons for some of these laws, but I'm, just as an example, um, because. The food service is part of the county health department. That's already something that we have here. But for someone like the, uh, let's say a five oh one C three wants to do a pop-up at one of our events. And give out free popcorn or free, you know, some of that stuff, they need a floor, walls, all these, they need a permit to just do that. Which is something that I understand why, but it, it's not really tailored to the city of Sierra Madre. So, those are my concerns if we bring one of these in, that we're making it prohibitive to have some of the fun and nice things that our city does enjoy.
And, and I guess, i- if we put the children's camps aside for a second, like with the four that we've got here, I'm comfortable with that. I was thinking just to make sure we do have the city attorney do a comparison of them and make sure that there are any watchouts on, on that. That's where I was kinda going on, thinking about the content, is that we've got these four, I think we agree on those. And, and then, and then we see, is there anything in those ordinances, from a legal perspective, from a legal review, that we should, should be concerned about? That, that would per- that would, that we should discuss. That's what my thought was on the four.
I think it's only, I think if that's the direction you're going, I think it's only two. I think it's tobacco and massage establishments. I don't think we need the attorney to dive deeply into retaliation for a public health violation reporting and. I think the swimming pool issue is less about conflicting law and more about, you know, making sure that. I'm going to make an assumption that the YMCA is probably more conversant in the county. Regulations around pools than anyone in this room. So, um, I'm not super worried that, that that's not, that that's a problem. But that's probably a separate point in terms of just making sure that, that we're not missing something there. Like maybe just outreach to them to make sure that.
I, I, so, so, so I'm seeing now that we're getting down into it in, in, is potentially three categories and I, and I agree with you. We've got tobacco massage to see if there's any concerns or conflicts with city ordinances. There's the other two that we, we, we basically just adopt, um, with, on eleven thirty-two notifying the Y. And then there's the, the question on children's camps, which is a bigger conversation.
I'm not sure we, I mean, we'd have to, yeah, I mean, we can consider eleven thirty-two, but, but as I said here now, I, I don't know without. That it's even necessary, um, personal, so, I mean.
I agree with you, as long as the Y is our tenant.
Do we wanna add another thousand dollar annual fee for them to have to pay, to then have the service that they're probably already following in the first place?
Is it a thousand dollar?
Well, it's up to a thousand dollars and se- a thousand seven, right? One sixty-two to a thousand seven.
I'm sure they're following it. Just because we don't have it in an ordinance doesn't mean it's not the law.
Because they do operate in the, in the, throughout the county, right?
Alright, so.
I'd be shocked if they weren't.
Okay, so now we're at eleven oh one, eleven thirty-five and eleven thirty-six, a- a- as ones we wanna adopt.
Yeah, and I don't even know that, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying I'm Mister Pro Tobacco, but I'm not even sure that eleven thirty-five is necessary, um, given what the service will get.
I mean, I guess the other que- the flip side is, if we were to eliminate our code and adopt the county's code. Do we save on enforcement? Like, and just, and, and just give it to them to deal with our tobacco establishments and?
Would they enforce it?
Like what, yeah, what agency and?
Are they gonna come into Sierra Madre regularly and enforce that?
And, and they won't be enforcing the business license portion. That's always on us, and, and incorporate city.
I mean, to me, that would be the benefit, right? Like, to the extent that we could have enforcement be borne by a different agency.
Is, is there an additional s- service or value that they give out of it? Cause we're, we'd be doing the business license and having. Can we dial back some of our, anything that we do and ha- that, that the county would then do for tobacco establishments?
I honest, I mean, tobacco is an interest, like, to me, it's sort of like no harm, no foul, because, you know, like, I'm not that, I'm not that interested in requiring people to have a different. License per se, but on the other hand, to the extent that we actually had a problem in town with an establishment selling, you know, tobacco to minors or selling flavored tobacco. Like, I wouldn't be against having another, you know, uh, bigger agency being brought to bear on that. I don't know, I mean, to, to, to council member Garcia's point, I don't know much, how much we, you know, in our own city, do that much enforcement of this, you know.
I don't think we do much.
Right, so I mean, I don't know that, that, I don't know that there's much harm in having the ability to call in, you know, greater resources. If we, if we thought there was an actual problem.
I agree with that.
Mayor and council, i- if I may, um, add something for your consideration. One of the things that I don't want our residents to have to deal with is. Uh, the city doesn't enforce that, that's the county. And residents trying to navigate through the county. And there are a lot of, um, situations where we work directly with the county. So if our city attorney can draft something where. We still have some responsibility in the process, so that, um, our residents have a place to go to try to resolve these issues. For example, if it's a tobacco, the initial complaint is filed with the city, then the city works with the county on resolving the issue. If it's a massage parlor, the initial complaint comes to the city, the city contacts the health department, but there is a place for our residents to go. I just don't want our residents, for us to say, we don't do this, the county, here's a number, and then our residents are gonna be frustrated with that process.
So that makes sense for tobacco massage. How about the prevention of retaliation for, for reporting public health violations? Is there anything, you're saying same?
They, they could report to us. They could report to us and then we pass that complaint along. But, uh, as the city manager pointed out, a lot of this stuff already flows through the existing practices. It all flows through code enforcement. And code enforcement, as needed, brings in public health. That's the way it's operated in the city as long as I've been here. So, I don't think we wanna disrupt the flow of that structure, is I think what the city manager's trying to say.
So, so, let me just switch the, the conversation for a sec, cause I think we're getting close to something here. Is there any interest in looking at eleven oh eight children's camps? I, I've heard from, what I'm hearing from council member Garcia is, let's, let's not complicate and add expense to it. I think I get the similar feeling from council member Krebs, but you're wrinkling your brow, so I don't know.
I guess, I mean, it, it does before we get to children's camps. I'm not sure what, what, what.
So, 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 so what, what, what I'm, what I'm hearing, and, and I may be wrong, is, is that we look at, at. The adoption of eleven oh one, eleven thirty-five and eleven thirty-six, uh, uh, but with the, the flavor that. The city is the first point of, uh, of reporting and, and then we have the county support, um, for. A county backing us up for additional support.
I have a question on that then.
Please.
City attorney Gregor Cian, in terms of the review of our code as compared to eleven thirty-five, eleven thirty-six tobacco and the. Retailing and massage establishments, how complicated is that? I, I, I guess, I guess where I'm going is, I don't want you to spend twenty hours, like reconciling these two things. I mean, if what we have is working. You know, let's just decide to do that. If we think that these are better and having the enforcement oblig- yeah, the force enforcement be. Reside with the county would be better, then let's do that. I'm not that, I guess I'm not that excited about crafting our own. Legislation somewhere in between, both from a cost perspective and like, it just seems like that's not what this is about. Like crafting our own, our own ordinance somewhere halfway.
Yeah, I, so, again, I th- I think the, the question to council was going, was. Which of these ordinances, whi- which of these ordinances do we want adopted into chapter eight oh four? Once they're adopted into chapter eight oh four, it doesn't matter whether there's overlap or not. Chapter eight oh four is gonna be entirely regulated by the county. And then whatever chap- whatever other chapter we have in our municipal code, that's gonna be entirely regulated by us. So I wouldn't see there being an issue per se. Um, and I kinda wanna, uh, ask this of, um, our director here. Mr. Robowski, you, you must deal with this often, uh, because you're dealing with eighty-five other cities. I'm sure all of your other eighty-five cities have a massage parlor ordinance, but then they're also incorporating the county's ordinance. If there's overlap between the county's ordinance and the local massage parlor ordinance, how do you reconcile that? My understanding was that you only handle the public health portion of it and then every other standard. The city would handle through its business licensing, but correct me.
I, I think that would be correct. I, I actually don't know if other cities yet have adopted the massage establishment, so that's for one thing. Um, but we could certainly take that back to our folks and get back to you with a response for our thoughts on how, you know, that we think that would, might work. But I, I think in other circumstances, that probably would be the case when the city has its own business licensing scheme. That we would work with your business licensing scheme, but then we would handle the public health inspection aspect of it. That seems like it would make the most sense.
How about with ta- with tobacco retailing?
That one, I, we do have cities that, you know, have it, um, you know, it's a good question. I'm sorry, I don't have the answer so often. Get back to you on that piece.
Yeah, and I'm trying to understand. I mean, I understand the spirit and I like eleven oh one, but, um, you know, reading it talks about. Before you can file a civil action, you have to do this, this and that. And it, that, that's not the kind of ordinances we tend to have here in the city. Um, so, um, you know, and there's a ten thousand dollar per day administrative fine and, and, you know, things like that. And I don't, I mean, those sounds like state laws and not municipal laws and I don't know that we adopt, I, I don't know. Really trying to wrap my head around that one.
I- is it staff's view that these make, adopting any one of these or all of them is a good idea?
We didn't wanna, at least I didn't wanna weigh in on that, because I, I really don't know. This is the first time this issue's ever come up. In the past, there are seventy other chapters in title eleven of the county's code that are all enforced pretty much. Uh, the, these are the carve-outs. So whether it's a good idea to enforce them or not, I don't know, because for the rest of them. And by the way, those other seventy, there's overlap in those other seventy as well, between what we have.
I guess what I'm thinking is if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I don't see a problem here with what we're doing now. And it seems like we're gonna complicate things, no, no matter which direction we go. I guess we could always come back and address this in the future and bring them back in if we saw the need, right?
I, I think the, if we're looking for the, the least difficult approach, would be to amend the code. As, as it's currently written, to say that we're incorporating all of the county's ordinances. And as amended in the future. And if an issue arises, we can always bring that to the, to the city council for consideration. And I, we also have the authority to enforce selectively. So if we feel something's not appropriate for the city, we can say this, this is. We're gonna hold off on enforcement of this and then we're gonna bring it to the council.
Why, why go that direction? Why, why incorporate all of them? Why not inc- uh, not incorporate until we start seeing an issue?
You, you can, you can do that as well. Uh, uh, my only point is that there are roughly seventy other ordinances that the county has adopted. That are currently being enforced that the city council's not, probably not aware of either. And so I don't know, I don't know how to make the distinction between those seventy and these. Seven or eight.
Why, why did you call it the seven or eight?
Because the county's specifically saying you have to adopt these seven or eight, or we won't enforce them. But we will enforce the other seventy that were adopted pre. Us entering into the agreement with them that we adopted whenever it was adopted.
These are, these are ordinances that were adopted after our agreement. And so they want better direction from the contractual counterparties. That we want them to enforce these in addition to the ones that they're already enforcing.
And if I've misstated anything, please do correct me.
I mean, Alex, I guess, one of my questions is, to the extent that we have no law on the books about. Retaliation for reporting public health violations, but it is a county law and we are in the county. Like, that's just a law that couldn't be enforced in Sierra Madre.
No, not within two local government entities and.
But I mean, but we have state law, for. But I mean, but we have state law, for example, that we have to follow without adopting it, right? I mean, state is different, because it preempts in a way that the county doesn't?
Correct.
Okay. So it's not like a hierarchy, it's that the state actually has asserted preemption, and the county does not.
Correct. And normally, these would all apply, like I said, as, as of the previous seventy. It's just the county's asking, is calling out these seven or eight specifically and saying, we want you guys to weigh in. And that's why they're, it's brought before you.
Because they were adopted in April, and that is after our.
I don't know when it was, they were adopted, but I don't know that that's the issue.
No, these, these, um, some of these ordinances, as I said, were adopted in, I think the earliest was twenty nineteen. I think it's more just that, because we were going through this activity of updating our agreements, we didn't want to assume that councils, or that cities wanted us to enforce these sort of newer ordinances that were passed by the board. Because, again, some of them, you know, may have new permit fees on your businesses and whatnot. So we didn't want to begin enforcing them without sort of your awareness and concurrence that that is what you wanted to do. So that's why we're requesting that cities affirmatively add these particular ones into your municipal code. Whereas, you know, our agreements, as they previously were, basically from our perspective, what we were doing prior to the agreements being, these new agreements being signed, and going forward, is the same, except with respect to these additional ordinances. Hopefully, that's clear.
I mean, on that basis, then I think I would be in favor of adopting none of these. Until, and less than until we think that there's an actual problem. I know that sounds reactionary, but, I mean.
Would you like to make that as a motion?
That is a motion, I think, I think lack of doing something doesn't require action.
So, so, do we, so, so, so then, then we just don't, don't take action on this item?
Yeah, if, if you, if you want the minutes to reflect that the, that the city council decided not to take action, then you should probably make a motion to that effect. But if you also fail to reach consensus on an issue, then we just move on, and the minutes will reflect that.
I think, I think we have consensus, what I'm hearing is, we have consensus to not take action. And I, I think from a, you know, a administrative record and a policy perspective, I think a, a motion is appropriate, but I.
I'll make that motion.
And, but also, does the county need, um, notice that we are not adopting these?
No, not to my, I mean, no.
No, right. But if we do adopt them, you would want notice.
Yeah, and actually, one of the benefits of the newer agreements is now, like, moving forward, we have a process in place where it's, it's spelled out in the agreement that when the board adopts new ordinances, we have a contact, your city manager, that we will notify you, and then, you know, you can let us know if you want to enforce it.
Thank you for the service, I mean, this is, it's great to have these options.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we're happy to, you know, give whatever additional information, including the question about sort of how we would, you know, enforce, working with your own jurisdictions, uh, ordinance on these, and then you can take that back for further consideration.
Thank you.
I do feel like we are not first movers on these kinds of things, and I'd be interested to know how other cities handle these things going forward, and maybe that will change our opinion, you know, in a future setting. But it seems like we're not in a, we're not, I don't know, personally, I don't think we're in a position to spend the money and the resources on deciding if we want to be on the leading edge of this, of this approach.
You second my motion?
Oh, yes, sorry.
All right.
What was the motion?
That we not take action on this.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, to that, that carries.
Thank you.
I, I, I do think that it, it is to, uh, Councilmember Krebs' point, is, is having a follow-up at some point to know what other cities are doing could, would be helpful. All right, um, so now we're on to discussion item two, the parking enforcement pilot program. Um, we've had, um, a, a, someone here for a very long time, and I apologize for this. Um, let's turn this over to, back to Acting Captain Siseto, and, um, let's talk about the pilot program with CEO Joe Caldwell. And my apologies, Mr. Caldwell, for it being so late.
But again, he said he's from Texas, so they can hang. Thank you, good evening, uh, mayor and council members. Without further ado, um, the police department continues to prioritize public safety and quality of life here in Sierra Madre. Tonight, we are addressing a longstanding concern that directly impacts our community parking compliance. The city has received, uh, multiple complaints, on average, two hundred and fifty calls for service related to parking concerns, that we respond to annually. Um, there is a need for more consistent and effective solution. Historically, we have relied on contracted vendors for enforcement. However, they've been unable to meet the staffing needs, and continue to subject us to rising costs between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and forty thousand annually, which makes this approach unsustainable and ineffective. To meet the community's expectations for safe and accessible parking, we've looked into an innovative alternative. Uh, we've been working with municipal parking services for roughly two and a half years to come up with potential solutions. Um, they have offered a solar-powered unmanned parking pole as an option. These devices enhance public safety by encouraging compliance, reducing congestion, and doing so with no need for additional personnel. Our staff's recommendation is that council authorize staff to negotiate terms with municipal parking services, and return to the city council with a fully developed one-year pilot program for consideration. In including that, we will have a com- comprehensive community outreach and education plan to enhance parking enforcement and gain compliance and cooperation between these locations. Sierra Madre Boulevard, between Baldwin Avenue and Sierra Madre Boulevard, and west of Montecito, uh, west Montecito Avenue. Final approval is contingent upon council's approval to finalize the program. I am very pleased to welcome our CEO of Municipal Parking Services, Mr. Joe Caldwell, who will be presenting more information, answering your questions about this advanced technology, and also help to address these growing concerns that our city is experiencing. Mr. Caldwell?
How y'all doing? All right, gotta wake up, but I got you. So, we've been around for, um, twelve years, we're in forty-four states, about eight hundred different places around the country. Uh, we started out originally developing a parking meter that actually wrote parking tickets by itself. I affectionately call it Satan on a stick, but it, it, uh, it was, it was pretty vicious, but it, it did, it followed all the city's rules, right? And so, we now have two other technologies that we're gonna present to you tonight. One, the city reached out to us two and a half years on, uh, two and a half years ago, and it is our safety stick. Uh, I think we have a deck here somewhere. Um, this was originally developed, um, yeah, let's see if we can go on there.
You, you actually, you need to speak into the microphone if possible.
Uh, so this was originally developed to change behavior in illegal parking spots, fire hydrants, bus stops, bike lanes, uh, bus lanes, uh, you, you name it. What a lot of people don't know is that twenty percent of a downtown area is no parking. First, you gotta be thirty feet back from every corner. It's a big safety concern if you park right on the edge, there's, you might be a member of Vision Zero, but we are a Vision Zero technology, where we're kinda like, they just did a big cinema a few months ago, where we were like their keynote. And so they're trying to reduce illegal, uh, people that are killed in downtown areas, just hit by cars, and it happens over nine thousand times a year in the United States, it's pretty bad. So, this technology was set up originally to curb illegal behavior. If you wanna go to the next one? Well, no, I, I'm good, so let's go to the next one, yeah. So, um, like we said earlier, it's zero cost to the city, uh, it is a, it is a situation where we do a, a revenue share on, uh, tickets that they issue. These things, the tickets, though, are issued by the city. So at the end of the day, this thing doesn't write tickets. It's, and also, it's not, this is not a money grab, but what we're actually trying to do is curb behavior. So if you look at the towns where we currently have this, and they're all over the country, you see about a ninety percent reduction in illegal parking. You see, I mean, we have a town, Bridgeport, Connecticut, that was averaging eleven people per day parking in front of fire hydrants, eleven per day per fire hydrant. Uh, it's down to one every other day. Uh, Gainesville, Georgia, which is a town about this size, uh, saw a ninety percent reduction in illegal parking after a hundred and twenty days. So, 'cause you know what, it's the same people. It's the same, I mean, I've never got up in my life and went, you know, I can't wait to park in front of a fire hydrant, but you'd be shocked. There are people who actually do, and so, um, glasses. Um, so, this enforces y'all's rules. So, when we originally approached the city two and a half years ago, and they were talking to us, this was originally about, like, fire hydrants and bus stops and things like that. But this is being used in other states to do timed parking. Like, if you ever saw the movie Manchester by the Sea with Casey Affleck, it, but, it's a tourist town. They have these out throughout the whole town to enforce two-hour parking. So, the, the crazy part is, people don't stay for two hours, they stay four, okay? Uh, in these, in these parking areas, like in Maryland and Pennsylvania, we have a lot of towns that have fifteen and twenty-minute-only parking spots. The average person, you wanna take a guess how long they stay? Ninety minutes. You know why? 'Cause it's rock star parking, it's the best parking in the whole town. And no one really does anything to enforce it, it's almost impossible to enforce. You walk around with a piece of chalk, trying to figure out if the guy was there or not, and it's just, it doesn't really, uh, work. So, golly, I should've wrote this all down, Stace. So, the other thing is, we actually, a lot of towns are not set up to mail tickets. Uh, that's not what y'all get up and do every day. So, you guys approve them all, okay? And we'll put them in the mail for you, so that's another service that we offer, so it's kinda turnkey. But at the end of the day, the officer approves the ticket, not us. So it's you guys that have to approve all of it. Okay, hey, thank you. I'll get to it in a minute, yep, so, um, all right, go to the next slide. So this is just kinda what we covered already, illegal parking. So, because of Stace's request, we're gonna show you how it works. I can't hear it from here, okay, so, it's all, it's all solar-powered, right? And what this thing actually does, let's first talk about a fire hydrant, right? Um, what's interesting is, all the towns that have these in front of fire hydrants have decided you can park in front of a fire hydrant for eighty-nine seconds. So let's just run through a fire hydrant scenario. Um, this thing's actually sound asleep, is what it's doing, and it only wakes up one second a minute, that's it. When it wakes up, boy, it does a lot of work. And so what it has in it is, it's a solar panel up here at the top, it's all battery, all the way down. It can actually technically run without the sun for about eighty days. You can actually put this in a dark closet, and it's still going. Uh, and what it's doing is it's sound asleep, wakes up for that one second. During that one second, if you guys can see that little ball-like thing right here, that is not a camera, it's actually a radar. And the radar looks at the spot. There shouldn't be anything there, you know why? It's a fire hydrant, okay? If there's something there, it kinda freaks out, it's like, whoa, 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 something's here. And there's a little baby camera right next to it, and it tells the camera to wake up, and the camera wakes up, and it goes, tch, tch, one picture, no video, no nothing. Then they go back to sleep. This time, they don't sleep for a minute, they sleep for ninety seconds. And what they do is, the radar looks at that spot again. If there's something there, it tells the camera to wake her little butt up, and she does, and she goes, tch, tch. Now, the radar, he's as dumb as a box of rocks. He just knows that there's an object right there in that spot, it could be an elephant, it has no idea. The camera in here, uh, she's Einstein's baby sister, she has got it all figured out, she knows everything, car, make, model of car, all that kinda stuff, it knows. And then, twice a day, once at lunch, and once at midnight, it sends all the data to the police department. And they look and go, you know what, that guy has parked in front of that fire hydrant for twenty-nine minutes, or eighteen minutes, or whatever, and then they decide, should they get a ticket or not. Now, you could also whitelist plates, meaning, these are our undercover cop cars. Here's all of our fire hydrants, and all of our police cars, here's, we have a town where all the schoolteachers get to park for free. So, the, the school district sent over all the license plates on the teacher, teacher rolls up to these things, it's like, oh, man, that's Teacher Johnson, had that lady in the third grade, I love that woman, free parking. So he can do those type of things. But, now, in a timed parking spot, let's say it's a twenty-minute parking spot, it's, it's looking every couple minutes to see if that car, that same car is still there. And then, once that, and I would not give someone a parking ticket at twenty minutes and one second, that would not be good, I, I think they would run you out of town. So, typically, what you see is about a ten-minute grace period on these things. Uh, and that's what I would suggest, but it's, it's your call, you can make it fifteen minutes, you can make it five minutes, those, these are, once again, all I'm going to do is enforce whatever rules y'all come up with, and whatever these guys come up with. So, we're just gonna do that. So, what happens is, you have a grace period on it. On a two-hour parking spot, it's doing the same thing, it's just, I'm gonna be able to tell you that that car was there for four and a half hours, you're gonna, the police are gonna make a decision on whether that person gets a ticket or not. I mean, we've seen, what's interesting about it, the, the people that want these the most, which are usually the downtown merchants, because people are sitting in front of their spot all day, little, uh, trade secret, the biggest culprit of these things are the downtown merchants. So, they also, uh, are the ones who complain the most, but they're also the biggest breakers of habits, I mean, the ones that kind of abuse it the most. So, things that you could do is, you could, um, do other things, like sell a permit to a downtown business owner, and say, look, you can park in, uh, front of your store for, you know, a thousand bucks a year if you want to, you don't have to go park in the ramp and drive three blocks to, to get here, you can do all kinds of flexibility with it. But, it's designed to do one thing, it's designed to enforce your rules, simple as that. And, um, and they're free, and they make a lot of money, let's go to the next one. But eventually, what happens is, it's not a money grab, so here's what happens. After about ninety days, the world changes, because people figure out what these things are doing. And so what we see is, we see a lot of violations for about three months, and then it just goes, to the bottom, okay? Because everyone figures out, well, wait a minute, uh, that thing gave me a ticket, you know what I mean? So what I would suggest we do, and I'll pay for it, is before these are deployed, um, I'll pay for it, I will mail out a letter on your letterhead, I'll pay for all of it, to every person that lives in this town, explain, hey, this is what's going in, here are the rules behind it, here's where they're going. And so, no one can come in here and say, you never told me about it, right? So, it can do all those things too. So, the suggestion was, was to run a pilot for one year, and to see what these things do for y'all. I know what they will do, they'll make a big difference, uh, big time, especially if you're trying to enforce these two-hour spots and these twenty-minute spots. Um, if you're trying to do things like fire hydrants and bus stops, you know, I almost jumped up when these people from the school, half the place was the school, and they were talking about the crosswalk in front of the school, and I'm like, wait a minute, I got these in Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania, in front of a school doing a crosswalk right now. You know what I mean, 'cause they, they do do that, they, they, they are like a crossing guard, right? And so, it has the ability to do those kinda things too, some stuff that was talked about earlier in the main. All right. Yeah, so it can, it can enforce all, this is a force multiplier, and so you, you have limited people, let them go do way more important things than, um, give someone a parking ticket for parking in front of a bus stop or a crosswalk and all that. But, you, you'd be shocked at how many people park in front of crosswalks, it blows my mind, 'cause I've never done it. But people in wheelchairs can't cross, people that are blind can't cross, I mean, that guy's stuck there, and, uh, it's a major safety problem, so, all right. Sure, go ahead.
They were talking about earlier how they are, they are very low on officers and resources to help the school out, um, that's what Ms. Veronica was saying, or the captain. Um, if they're busy in the downtown area trying to enforce timed parking, if you put our devices there to take over on that, it might free up some of the resources for the police department to actually provide them elsewhere, regardless of whatever the issue is.
We even have one town moves them around all the time. Um, I don't remember where they're, I think Massachusetts, but they move them, uh, they're downtown during the week, and then they have a football game on Friday night, they move them out to the high school, and they put them in the fire lane in front of the high school. Then on Thursdays during the basketball season, they put them from the arena in front, arena in front of the fire, so actually, these actually, you can just pick them up and move them wherever you wanna move them. So, they, they do all that kinda stuff too, so they have a lot of flexibility.
How do you keep people from stealing them if they can be picked up and moved?
Oh, no. Okay, they're, they're not, they're, they're bolted to the ground, so you gotta unbolt them. So, if, you'd be out here for about ten minutes trying to unbolt it, but you gotta, first you gotta pop off, it, it's like a big sheet that comes out, and there's three little bolts. So, yes, have they ever been hit by a school bus, not school bus, but city bus? The answer is yes. Has a snowplow ever whacked one of these over? Uh-huh, yeah, it has. Uh, so, we've, we've been hit by a drunk lady who took everything out on the entire sidewalk, and we lost. Yes, that happened one time too. Uh, but we've also been hit with a dude by a bicycle, and it just popped over, and so it's designed not to shish kabob somebody. It has enough force to stand up, but it will, it will, you could literally knock it over if you wanted to, you know what I mean? But they're on me, so if someone does vandalize them, obviously, I don't want you to use your best efforts to figure out who it was, but at the end of the day, it's my stuff, and I'll have to go put it back up, you know what I mean?
So, we cover one hundred percent of the cost of the technology, whether you. So we cover one hundred percent of the cost of the technology, whether you get thirty-two locations, which is what we kinda started with for an installation plan to recommend. Um, or whether you get a hundred and forty-five devices. The cost is one hundred percent covered. We cover the cost of shipping and we also cover the cost of the install as well. And then any um installations after that, if you, you kinda order in increments, we install those and cover the cost. And the damage, maintenance and vandalism, you give us a call, it's fully on us.
How many cities do you have these installed in?
I think we're in forty-four states and close to a hundred cities, but all of our tech, between all three of our types, over eight hundred places.
So we, we just uh went through a sidewalk enhancement program. What, what, what does, what's the hardware like? Is it, we spent a lot of money on our southern sidewalk down the boulevard, like, does it? How does it install and is it, will you protect our assets?
There are three little bolts about uh one inch long that just kinda go right down into, I can send you a slide on it, but it's, it's very uh unintrusive, let's just put it that way. Um, and there's a little plate that it sits on, but the three bolts go into the plate and it slides on to the plate. They literally take about five to ten minutes to install. I mean, we just actually built an install app, um, so you could install them if you wanted to. Because long-term, what we wanna do is actually ship these from Paris to Paraguay and we just sit in Texas and just make them, you know what I mean? And let the cities install them. But here in the United States, we're, we're doing the installs ourselves, so.
And you, you mentioned, I think you called them white plates, like, so plates that would not get tickets?
Y'all make up those plate numbers.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, law enforcement, but I believe people that are disabled have um, have uh exemptions from parking and timed parking. So how, how do we, and sometimes they have temporary uh disabled placards that go up in their, their mirror rather than their license plate. How do we determine these?
So, what we've seen how, we actually did this in Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania, same situation. Uh, where they have these in handicap spots, okay? And when they um, when they send out a ticket, they have a link that you can void it. You could, let's say I sent you a ticket and you have a handicap placard. There's a link and you can just put in your handicap credential and void the ticket, okay? Because I, I'm looking down like this, okay? I'm not taking pictures of people's faces walking up and down the sidewalks, okay? And so, I'm not gonna get your face unless you crawl down the sidewalk on your hands and knees, okay? So I don't see the placard up in that rearview mi- uh mirror, if that makes sense, okay? Um, so that's how you do it. So, and then we white label, we then whitelist them, so we don't ever send them another one, you know what I mean? The other, the other thing that we can also do is when we send out, when I suggested that we send everyone in the town a letter letting them know what to do. We could provide a link where they would then just enter their credentials and we would automatically, and we would work with law enforcement to make sure those are legit credentials. I mean, I don't know, I think it was LA, like fifteen years ago, IBM did a study for them, found out they were losing thirty million a year on fake handicap placards. Where they were making them on Photoshop type things. So we could, we could then give all that to law enforcement if they wanted to, to make sure that those are actually legit um placards.
So the person would put in the number and then law enforcement would run it and they'd be able to run it if, 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 if it's a red placard versus a blue placard?
And then, and then we could white label that plate. We could say, plate, you know, Tex, you know, not Texas, California plate A B C one, two, three, uh, that's white labeled, you know, it's on the whitelist. It can stay X amount of time. You wouldn't let it park in a fire lane, a bike lane, a bus stop and things like that, but on the timed parking spots, if you wanted to, you could, you know.
But then, but then that assumes that that car is always having the disabled person in the car.
Move their placard to another place and then they got a ticket, there would be a link to pay and there would be a link to void it. So they could click on that link, okay, enter in their, their placard number, uh, if they wanted to. So you could do that. I will tell you that happens in, in less than one percent of the time. This is not, um, it's, it's, we don't run into it that much. It does happen though, so we've had to address it, so.
I have a question.
Please.
So, just relatedly, but maybe broadly, more broadly, you know, you mentioned that you would provide it to the law enforcement and they would run it. When you originally described the process, you said that, that, you know, that it would uplink information twice a day.
Sure.
I assume there's some AI, some amalgamation, like there's, we do not have the resources for someone in the police department to look at raw data to see how long any car was in any one.
Oh, it tells them that.
Okay.
So it's given, it's all time-stamped, so it's saying license plate A B C one, two, three was in your two hours parking spot for three hours and thirty-six minutes.
So it's programmed to know what the violations are, so that it doesn't say that like car, it doesn't give you like every car that was there, this one was there for three minutes and this one was there for six minutes?
And then it, and then it says, there's a button that says approve ticket. It's a blue button. You just hit yes, approve. And then we met, then we'll take it from there.
It, it does sort it such that, cause I, the impression I got was it just gives you raw data like.
You wouldn't need a hundred people to work here just to do that, cause it's so much data.
So going back to a lot of police departments being low staff or low on resources, what we are suggesting is, if you guys approve the pilot program. Um, pretty much sign a pilot agreement, we take it over from there. Once the violations come through the cloud, we would go as far as approving them with law enforcement, as long as they allow us to. Approving the violations, mailing out to three notices, handling collections, we'd set you up with a payment platform as well. Um, and then literally cut the city a check every month. You would do absolutely nothing except get a report.
Yeah, and we do that in some states. Um, California is not, not one of the ones that we could probably get away with where you deputized us and turned us into, to Barney Fife from uh. But, so we can do, we can do everything except do that final step, which is hit the blue button and hit approve, okay? So, um, but in some states, they can, like Georgia for example, Tennessee, they can outsource, like the, they can deputize a private company to issue tickets. And if you can't do that, uh, we'll do it for you. It's no big deal. We'll just send you a check every month, so. Um, I'm not exactly familiar with the California rules on that, so.
So you, you're not doing it with any California cities then?
No, not yet. Y'all are the, will be the first one, cause we're just starting to get, we just cracked open Texas and now we're moving into California. And next we're gonna be doing, uh, but we're on, we're already in Washington, I think, uh, and we're in Idaho. So we're coming your way. And we're in Arizona. We do the Arizona Cardinals, the NFL team, so, and we just got Yankee Stadium. Um, so a lot, a lot of interesting things coming.
And, and you, you're just proposing these safety sticks and not the, the LPR cameras that you've got in your presentation?
So the, so the next thing, that's for parking lots. You probably, you probably have used our technology before. If you've ever, these are for parking lots. So if you ever pulled in a parking lot and saw a QR code to pay and there was, that's us, okay? They just, people, we own all the patents on that around the world. And, but people white label that product as their own product, but that's really us. And we, we have a ton of, we have probably over a million parking spaces using that technology right now. And so you guys had some lots here in town that you guys uh had some interest in. And how that technology works is when the car drives into the entrance of the parking lot, it takes a picture of the license plate. Then the, the customer decides how many minutes does a guy get in order to pay. So let's say typically it's um half hour. You got a half hour to, to pay. And you scan that QR code or you use the app, but you have a half hour to pay. If a, if a half hour comes rolling by and you haven't paid, the technology looks and sees if the car's still there, if it left or not, okay? If it's still in the parking lot, then you have three choices. You can, it can automatically call Tim and Tom's tow truck company and have the guy tow it out there, if you want to, okay? It can text. It can text message Billy and Bob's bootcoming, come boot the guy. Or third, it can just mail them a ticket, okay? So it can do things like that. Let's say there's some bad guys and you give us a list of plates of stolen cars or Amber Alerts. If any of those things come, come in, we'll immediately, um, you know, call the police. We do these for Tampa, uh, Citrus County, the sheriff's department in Tampa. It's a very interesting use case, probably not gonna work here, but we do their boat ramps. So when you, when you launch your boat, you pull your boat out, we get a nice little pretty picture of the trailer on your plate of your, of your trailer or your boat. And you've got one hour to go to this machine and pay. Crazy part is, it's on the honor system. It's ten dollars to launch your boat, Citrus County, Florida, ten bucks. In July of this year, three thousand people launched their boat and didn't pay the ten dollars. So they got a fifty dollars, they did a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tickets. But here's the cool thing it does. It has the ability to, um, it knows that you're there, right? So the problem that they had is all their boat ramps set to the ocean. So they said to us, look, can you text this phone number right here? Cause there's a lot of shady things that happen in the middle of the night on these boat ramps. We don't have enough patrol cars, so it's a force multiplier. Can you text this number here if you see a, a boat coming in at two, three o'clock in the morning? And we'll send a patrol car over to see what's going on. And we had, I can't really talk about it all probably, but we did a couple huge busts on that one boat ramp in June of last year. And so it, it's, it can do those type of things if you want it to, right? Um, you guys, I hear, have an area here where, and this, um, he was telling me that you guys are lock, locking people in. There's like a gate that comes in and goes out, then you lock them in and now they're stuck and they can't get out. What was the name of that place? What's the name of that place where they get stuck all the time?
Bailey Canyon.
Bailey Canyon. Y'all lock people in Bailey Canyon all the time, okay, so. So we would know that there's still two cars up there, you know what I mean? We wouldn't know that four cars came in and only two came out and there's still two sitting up there, so don't lock the gate yet, go find, so. And the people who live in Bailey Canyon, we would lightly, white label all their plates and wouldn't count them. You see what I'm saying? We could say, okay, these thirty plates, we don't care if they're still stuck up there, because they live there, right? And everyone else, so it's very smart. It gets back to, uh, we'll work with you guys to program it exactly how you want it. But it's a pilot for one year and then we'll come back here and you know, we'll have a lot of data, so.
Yeah, so the lots kind of got thrown in at the last minute, just because we offer the technology. Um, Sergeant Cadzo asked that I just provide a little bit of information, but that's not what our main focus is today. The main focus is the downtown area, the twenty-minute parking, the two-hour parking, attempting to do the one-year pilot. Um, so that you can get a good feel for, you know, the efficiency of it, the operations of it, and if it's something that you wanna consider long-term. So, just basic information on this. And then I provided pictures of the lots. Um, they mentioned five of them. They told me to just put these three in. I have not put together any estimations on them, estimated revenue or anything like that. It was just something to consider down the road, to let you know that we offer the technology.
Perfect. I'd like to turn it to, to, this has been fantastic. Thank you for the presentation. I'd like to turn it to council for questions. Any additional questions you guys have?
Alright, um, so ju- just to understand, is it's, is the programming stick specific or is it GPS specific? So like if we, if we, let's say we were the people that moved from one place to another, would you have to like reprogram it to say, you went from a two-hour to a twenty-minute spot?
Just, but we have the app, or you can just call and tell us. Stick number eleven is now a twenty-minute spot.
Okay, okay.
And stick number ele- stick number eleven is now a two-hour spot. And you know, you just have to tell us. It's just a phone call.
Alright.
Or you want to use the app to do it yourself.
I mean, to, just to clarify, this actual item on the agenda is just to allow them to develop a pilot plan and then they'll bring the pilot plan back to, for us for approval. That's my understanding, right?
We should be pretty much done on that one slide. Um, we originally started again with those thirty-two locations. Um, I'm not gonna go through the estimated revenue, you can kinda check that out for yourself. We turned it into, they counted the locations. There was a hundred and forty-five spaces between twenty-minute and two-hour. We broke it down to one citation per day at a hundred dollars a ticket. Um, we expect to collect seventy percent of that and then, um, we would only get paid on the citations that are actually paid. So you can kinda run through the, uh, the numbers. If you have any questions, you're welcome to contact me directly at my number at the end of the presentation.
How do you estimate the total cost of the city?
Well, that is based on the number of tickets. So this, we were told by your department that they thought, or that you guys could do one ticket a day per spot. I think you probably will, honestly, for the first ninety days. And then I think it goes way down, because it's the same dude, you know what I mean? So, uh, and then, so you said mailing costs, three notices, seven thirty-one, that's what it costs us. But sixty-five percent, that's like the, we, we gave you worst case, just sixty-five percent of the people that pay a ticket pay it in the first notice. So you don't get to that third notice, right? And so you're only like around two dollars and something for the first notice. Then you get another, um, twenty percent of the people pay it on the second notice. So eighty-five percent of that seventy percent collected in the first two notices, if that makes sense. You don't really, you only get to that third notice about ten percent of the time, so. But we just, we're just trying to, um, you know, slow roll a little bit and just look at the, like, the worst case type thing, you know what I mean?
So on average, you're probably looking at around five dollars per ticket, but that's us handling, again, all of the mailing of the notices, the collections, the payment platform that's offered at no cost. Um, handling the collections itself and then just sending you a check back. So that's all the operations included.
So of, of the hundred dollars of, of the ticket, we get five dollars?
No, 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 you, no, 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 no. So we do a fifty-fifty split on only the paid tickets, so you're protected. So let's just say you only have a thirty percent collection rate.
We, we don't get paid round when you get paid. If you don't get paid, none of us get paid, so it's.
So our, our normal model is a forty-sixty split, but we get forty percent whether they pay or not. Um, for cities like yours where they have high volumes and especially timed parking, it's like, it's, it's one of our most ideal locations. We do a fifty-fifty split on only paid tickets. So a lot of cities are risking that loss of having to pay forty percent on the tickets that aren't paid. If that makes sense?
Yeah.
So whatever's brought in, you get fifty, we get fifty, and then for, on five dollars a ticket, we fully handle everything for you and you just see a check. Law enforcement will never have to look back at those bases and.
So it's, a lot of cities, they're set up to do this, so we really hardly do anything. We just, they mail it, they collect it, their judge adjudicates it, I mean, they're completely, and we're just sending the data, you know what I mean? And then we get to other cities where they're like, look, we're not set up for any of this. Just ma- just mail us a check and change the behavior, cause we don't like people saying hour and a half and twenty minutes lots, you know what I mean? And so that's, and, and there's everything in between, Mayor. I mean, there's, you name it. Um, some towns, we don't collect anything, but we do everything, but they collect all the money and they send us the money, you know what I mean?
This is, this is really helpful. So I, I think, um, I think we've got enough information to have, to have discussion on it. I, I was, thank you. That's where I was going? Yep. Um, so I'd like to open up for public comment. Madam Kirk, is there any, any public comment?
No, speaker cards were submitted, Mr. Mayor.
And no emails?
And no emails.
Right. Um, so yeah, so thoughts, thoughts of the council?
I mean, I think the real discussion's gonna be when we have an actual plan to look at. I mean, I would say, just personally, I can't quite tell on the map, but I would really, really like one of the thirty-two to be the non-parking spot in front of Spark Starbucks. It's the stripe next to the handicap, because people are constantly parking in that and that one just drives me crazy.
So that's the beauty of having a pilot program, is that we can maneuver these on um immediate basis. So we would probably wanna look at putting one permanently there, because it is a problem. We get lots of calls for service for that and we often station our personnel to monitor that. So that's absolutely a capability that we've discussed in great detail with MPS.
Yeah, I mean, I, that, look, I mean, I'm all for the, you know, enforcement of the timed parking. But I also feel like there's certain places in town where there is, you know, supposed to be no parking and people routinely take advantage of that. And to me, that's my highest priority.
That's what, uh, if I may, ma'am, um, Mr. Caldwell talked about for the red zones or the fire hydrants, we can certainly put one there. And there wouldn't be a time limit, it would be an automatic citation.
I don't know how much, I mean, from your perspective, do we have a lot of problems with fire hydrant and bus, and, and fire lane violations?
We don't get a lot of calls for service, but we do have a problem.
And one of my other concerns is that, you know, a lot of our residents have pride in the aesthetic. And we're, you know, having fifty sticks around our downtown area, what, what it looks like aesthetically, uh, that might be an issue. Uh, cause we already get complaints about signs and flashing lights and this and that. Um, so I, yeah, I don't know if you could, if, if you could model like what it looks like when they're all out, if that's something you guys do?
I can send you, I've got lots of towns that have, I can send you pictures.
Yeah, that'd probably be helpful, yeah.
We can bring that one, come forward with a pilot, just so you can see other towns.
They're, they're all, they're all gray. That, that's the one color.
I mean, where, where you want, so yeah. Wherever you, they come gray, okay? But if y'all wanna change it to black or look like teen stripes, like a, a car will do it for you, so.
One of the other things that we can do when we look at an installation plan for the pilot, um, if you have an entire block that is uniformed, two-hour parking. And as long as there's no ways for them to cheat, exit through an alleyway, we use the time, the lot technology for that as well, where we only put one camera at one block and one camera up at the other. Those are hardwired. And like Joe had said, they can also work, um, with the police department on catching people that have a warrant out for their arrest or a stolen vehicle, but it can take the hardware off the sidewalk. Um, that obviously only will work as long as there's no way, again, for them to cheat their way out of the. Um, but obviously only will work as long as there's no way, again, for them to cheat their way out of the block, they have to hit both cameras.
Well, why don't we go ahead, it sounds like we've got it in a good direction that we, uh, have, get a, a, uh, plan back to us and consider it as a pilot?
So I, we, they, we need to take action, right, so?
Do we, it says provide staff with direction, so there isn't a vote required on this item?
Absolutely, would love to see what you can do.
Alright, thank you for your patience.
Always back. Yeah, always back, alright, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we have two items here and we are right at the magic ten PM window, um.
Mayor, I believe both items will probably take no more than ten or fifteen minutes.
That was my guess, so thank you.
Can we all commit to that, or?
Yeah.
I can commit to it.
I'm committing to brevity right now.
Yes.
Move to approve? Sorry. Director Yanez, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I come to you tonight to, uh, present to you our annual intent to set assessments and confirm the engineer's report for the downtown landscaping and lighting maintenance districts and set date for a public hearing. Uh, the analysis is that the city council will consider approval of the annual engineer's report and declare intention to confirm and set assessments for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and set a public hearing date for June tenth, twenty twenty-five, uh, to take public comment, confirm the assessments, and order the levy for the district. This is an annual, uh, assessment, as I said earlier, fiscal impact, there are no fiscal impacts associated with the initial proceedings and it li- aligns with our strategic plan correlation. The project falls within our str- strategic plan under infrastructure and growth management, which involves improving and maintaining our city streets. This concludes my presentation.
This is just the, the collection of, of the money and, and the use of the money in the lighting district, right?
That is correct, sir.
Um, any other questions? Hearing none, open it up for public comment.
Mr. Mayor, no requests for public comment.
Bring it back for discussion? Any more discussion on it?
Nope. No?
Well, we can move and approve it without Councilmember Krebs, um, I think, i- in the interest of time, we'll consider to do that. So, um, I'll, I'll look for a, a motion to approve?
I move to approve resolution twenty-five dash thirty-four, approving the intent to levy and confirm the engineer's report for the downtown landscaping and lighting maintenance district for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
So this is actually, I, I apologize, this is not, uh, this is a council discussion and we do need a, we just need to set the date certain, so I don't think this is a motion and approval, is that correct?
There is a resolution.
A resolution.
Okay, twenty-five thirty-four.
So we have the motion, so you can get back in time to vote.
Oh.
I'll second it.
Alright, alright, so Councilmember Krebs, we're just looking to set a date to, um, look at levying the assessment district in the downtown lighting district, so it's moved in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great, last item on the agenda, the discussing of the, uh, resolution twenty-five thirty-six amendment to classification plan and salary matrix.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight you're being asked to consider resolution number twenty-five thirty-six, which would amend the city's classification plan and salary matrix. As outlined in the staff report, these adjustments will not have an impact to the current fiscal year budget or the proposed, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Uh, that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to address any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Quick question.
Yes.
So you specifically referenced this budget and next budget, was that just for our edification? Or is, is, is the idea that it may affect budgets in the future? Or is it, you were just mentioning the, the budgets that were currently under discussion?
Just to mention that it might have an impact on the budgets. Any other questions? Open up for public comment, Madam Clerk, do we have any ca- comment cards or comments from, uh, by email?
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
Close it, uh, close public comment, bring back for discussion, any further discussion?
I move to approve resolution twenty-five thirty-six.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Motion passes, alright, we'll move on to future agenda items, are there, uh, does anybody have any future agenda items? I, I'd like to, to have a further conversation about this trade-off between the, um, fire protection and historic preservation. Um, I think it's, you know, it, it, it's a tough trade-off and I'm hearing from a number, uh, of residents, um, that, um, they want to be able to keep the character of their area, but being, being able to, to, uh, protect their homes. Uh, because if the home burns down, it's not historic anymore, so, great, anything else? Uh, I will then entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone, thank you.